Okay, folks. It is 6:30, so I will call our meeting to order.
State about Charles and emergency money.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Just a moment ago, I saw the the new page that had all the directions about participating remotely. But I will mention briefly, anyone who's joining remotely, please indicate your name, first and last name on your screen. Anyone who wishes to speak either in person or remotely, please raise your hand, or if you're on remote, raise your electronic hand on your Zoom machine. We'd ask you to keep all your comments to three minutes, and we will have assistance of Ms. Prim with keeping track of time. And I think that's about it. We have a couple of members of the council who are appearing remotely, so I'll ask them to identify themselves.
This is Carrie Brown, District Three.
Hi, everyone. Pining Con, District Two.
Okay, thank you. We have, next up is to approve the agenda. We have a couple of changes, at least from the printed agenda. We had item number six, presentation by downtown businesses. They're not able to be here, so we'll be rescheduling them for another night. And I think that's it for changes to the agenda that I'm aware of.
Presentation beginning right after the consent agenda.
Uh huh, yep. And we're, next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity.
We haven't got there.
We will when we get there. We I'll consider the agenda approved. The time is for general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And as with other items, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. We'll start by seeing if there's anyone in the room who is interested in addressing the council.
The only one, but I walked around town with folks who've lived here for years, and they feel like it's not worth their time. It's useless to address the council and try to change anything. And that's a systemic problem you all need to deal with. No one noticed for
Would you start by?
No one noticed for 10 or 11 months since the flood that the Wi-Fi wasn't working in front of City Hall. And I looked into it, found the unplugged cable in the basement, realized that the existing cable will reach easily into the upstairs window. The device is mounted directly between the downstairs and upstairs windows outside of John's window, City Clerk's office. And it was simple a matter of having your IT consultant assign it to a jack and remake the ethernet end because it's too large to pull through the existing hole. I went through it with John. He thought finance killed it. I asked Lumbra. He thought it's like, what does it take to get something working that people rely on it? I hadn't noticed it because I frequently use obchance, but it was somebody from New South Wales, Australia, who said, where's the public Wi-Fi? We need it. We're tourists here. You know? So if we want to be an inviting town and begin to pretend that we've are recovering, let's get simple stuff done, like get the Wi-Fi turned back on. Not only in City Hall, at City Hall and out front, but let's plan it for all around town. We have district heat. It has fibers on top of it. It is untrue that those fibers could not be used without creating a security risk by designating a fiber for district heat metering of hot water and using other fibers. It was a gross oversight in the district heat system going in to not have buried fiber beneath it and have 100 fibers available. But there are eight fibers, and they go to most of the areas in town where we would want to put Wi-Fi access points. And we could potentially even generate revenue. If an ISP wants to get into a particular building that's served by district heat, that may be a way to generate, that may be the cheapest way to get them into the building. Again, no security risk, no light travels between parallel fibers. They're totally different physically isolated circuits, even though they're close together. The last meeting, you approved $100,000 contract without a competing bid for just moving the fiber above flood level. One, without a reference to what or even a design first, it's a waste of public funds to spend money that way. That's a huge amount of money for the amount of fiber that needs to get moved. And we should start with a plan for how, what else might it get used for? How might it generate revenue? I would ask that you reconsider the vote on approving a no no competition $100,000 contract for moving the fiber and put that one on pause while we get our design together consistent with a Wi-Fi plan. A walkway across the tracks, the construction on the railroad track between Shaw's and our 16 main parcel, where the M&amp;M used to be, has been a real hazard. They removed a whole lot. They cut the asphalt. They've created huge, deep obstacles of people having to cross. That is traditional walkway from M&amp;M to Shaw's. It's hazardous to go to the sidewalk and walk in through the parking lot because there's no sidewalk there. And you got blind backing out traffic out of those spaces along the rail. So it's going to be, and then I just heard that ECI, from ECI that they're planning, they think that they're supposed to put a chain link fence all along there when this bridge construction is done. That should not
Thank you. Your time is expired.
And you don't think any of this is worth discussing, right?
What I know is that the city council discusses, the city manager discusses every item that comes to general business and appearances the day after our meetings.
And where's the follow-up to the public who bothered to bring it to your attention?
So, thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to be heard on general business and appearances? And is there anyone online? I'm not seeing any hands, but it can be tricky to to tell. Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. We are pulling two items off the consent agenda, item D, Resolution to Honor Retiring Chief Gowan's and Stevens and Associates Contract Amendment.
And of course, there are no minutes to approve.
Okay. So what's on the consent agenda is payroll and warrant approval and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items on it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now to bring up the resolution in honor of retiring Fire Chief Gowan's. Bob, why don't you come on up? This is probably your favorite thing, right? Having a lot of people pay attention to you. Okay, folks, shall I read it? I'll read it. This is for a vote? Resolution honoring the retirement of Fire Chief Robert Gowan's. Whereas the city of Montpelier takes great pride in recognizing the dedication and service of its distinguished citizens, and whereas Robert Gowan's has faithfully and honorably served the Montpelier Fire Department for over four decades, beginning his illustrious career on July 12, 1979. And whereas through his unwavering commitment and exemplary service, Robert Gowan's was promoted to Lieutenant in 1996, further elevated to Deputy Chief in 2008, and ultimately achieved the rank of Fire Chief on May 1, 2011. And whereas Robert Gowan's is a proud graduate of Montpelier High School and serves his country with honor in the United States Navy. And whereas, as an active member of New England Association of Fire Chiefs, Robert Gowan's has contributed significantly to the professional development and standards of fire services across the region. And whereas Fire Chief Robert Gowan's was instrumental in implementing the paramedic program into the Montpelier Fire Department, greatly enhancing the emergency medical services available to our community. And whereas beyond his duties in the Fire Department, Robert Gowan's has served as a town service officer and health officer, demonstrating his dedication to the welfare and safety of Montpelier's residents. And whereas his career is marked by the saving of countless lives and his support of numerous community events, including the Do Good Fest and the Vermont Mountaineers baseball team, further exemplifying his commitment to community engagement and service. And whereas Robert Gowan's leadership, compassion, and tireless dedication have left an indelible mark on the city of Montpelier and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Montpelier hereby honors and expresses its deepest gratitude to Fire Chief Robert Gowan's for his extraordinary service, leadership, and dedication to the safety and well-being of our community. And be it further resolved that the city of Montpelier extends its best wishes to Robert Gowan's fulfilling and well-deserved retirement with profound appreciation for his contributions to the city. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
And is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, well. Thank you on behalf of the city and by your thumb up. We also have the key to the city of Montpelier.
Thank you. And we have a resolution, but we're gonna give it to you when the all sign is, Jerry and Pilling.
Yeah.
Get that. You're not done yet, Bob. So I got a few things to say. And then I know there's some others.
So I have worked with Bob for almost 30 years, and the last 12 or so as chief, and it has been my privilege to work with him through floods and ice and walk around rivers in the freezing cold and everything else that we've done all this time. And I just want to say thank you for your service, but most of all, I believe I speak for our whole team, and we have a card here. And we have a photo of most of the Fire Department.
And because you were such an important part of the leadership, even I know you enjoyed it, we have photo.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank all of you. I'll start with and introduce my wife Angela. Some of you know her. She served on the council a number of years ago, but and then I also want to recognize on the screen, I have so many family members up there, so many friends, so many friends that I didn't know were going to be on this call. It's hard. I'm trying to find everybody, and I can't. But for everybody who was there, thank you so much for this. I'm just trying to see everybody. This, you know, family, friends. The Fort Lauderdale Police Chief is on the call, so that's where my son retired as a Fort Lauderdale Police Officer. He's here, a friend of Angela's and mine. So I just want to thank everybody for everything. And there may even be a couple of grandkids that want to say something. Evelyn's gonna let him in. So yeah, just use your hand raise, and Evelyn will let you in one at a time.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. Yes. Oh, I know. I'm seeing the hands raised. I'm getting ready to call on people. First up is Sarah Gowan's.
Do you want to say? Say it.
Oh, that's just Sarah.
Yeah. Shaw.
Please say you love me. Say it.
Can you say it louder?
I love you, Grandpa.
I love you too, Gavin. It's my grandson Gavin. And Sophia's there, my granddaughter Sophia, my son Dan and his wife Sarah.
Hi, Grandpa.
Hi.
Love you.
I love you too. I'll see you in August.
You want to talk? I'd like to talk at the end, Dad, if I can, if you want to go to other people.
Okay.
Sure.
Quickly. These folks have business to do here tonight.
Dylan, you're up next.
Just wanted to congratulate my stepdad and Bryce.
Happy retirement, Grandpa.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bryce is our grandson that's living with us this summer, so.
Nice.
Yep.
Yeah.
And next, M. Gowan's.
Hey, Bob. It's, I'm Bob's youngest sibling. And I just can't, we can't be more proud of you. What wasn't mentioned in the, this beginning speech was, not only has Bob been a leader for the city of Montpelier, but he's also been a leader for all of his four siblings, his grandchildren, all the way down through the line. We are so proud of you, Bob. We love you and hope for nothing but greatness in the future with you, for you. I love you, buddy.
Thank you, man.
Congrats.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone in the room who's looking to speak?
That's everybody on.
I think that's everyone online. Oh, Dan, why don't you, Dan, you wanted to speak. Why don't you speak up now?
Uh, yeah, first of all, Dad, sorry I'm not there. You know, you've you've been a true leader to not just the city, but the family. Uh, your character. At the end of the day, we're nothing without character. And I can honestly say that my career was because I walked in your footsteps. And the person I am is because I walk in your footsteps. And it's easy to be a leader 40 hours a week. But you are truly a leader 24/7. The things I've seen you do for your community, you know, I've seen you go back to fire scenes on your day off and pull furniture out and bring it to the house and clean it. I've seen you help people in need. You know, that city's gone through some pretty traumatic incidents, and you know what I'm talking about? And you didn't only support your guys, but you lifted that city up and you lifted the family up. So at the end of the day, all we have is our character, and when you walk out that door, just know that your character will supersede your career. It'll supersede 40 hours a week. And that right there, you should be proud of. And I love you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you so much. I love you too. Um, we'll be seeing you soon. And appreciate everything. And you and Sarah have on department shirts.
Yeah, nice.
You got on some department t-shirts. So great. So this
I see Rachel Crowe. Your daughter Rachel is on.
Okay.
So Rachel, you should be unmuted now.
Congratulations.
Hey, Cooper, thanks.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to just wanted to say congratulations and very proud of your career and everything that you've done. You know, Dan said it beautifully, and you know, I just appreciate everything that you've done for all of us and you know, pushing me to do better and be a better person. So I'll keep it short, but we love you and congratulations.
Thank you, Rachel, and I'll see you next week or next Saturday, next Saturday. Rachel flies.
Next Saturday.
Yeah, so just so everyone knows, my son Dan is a retired Fort Lauderdale, Florida Police Officer, and my daughter Rachel is retired from the United States Coast Guard. A Norwich grad, she's a Norwich grad, and I retired, she retired from the Coast Guard, just and actually, Rachel and I retired on the exact same day, just one year apart. We both retired on June 24th, a year apart, so.
Notice they both beat you.
What's that?
Notice they both beat you.
They both beat me. I have no idea why, so. Yeah, and if it wasn't for Angela, I'd probably still, I wouldn't be here tonight. I'd still be working, so. The only reason I'm retiring is because Angela told me I had to, so. Because it was like, it was about a year and a half ago, I went to Bill and I said, I think I'm going to retire. And then I ended up staying another whole year. And the reason I stayed is because of this fantastic team we have here. That's the reason I stayed. I just I loved working with this team, with Bill and Kelly and Sarah and Evelyn and Chris and the entire team, Eric and Kevin. And if it wasn't for all of them, Kurt, I know there's others that aren't here. I would have left a year ago, but because of the great team we have here, I decided, I ended up staying another year, and I considered one more, but somebody told me I couldn't, so.
Well, given what's happened in the last year, it's great that you've been able to be here.
You know, you're right. I'm glad I was here for the flood. I really am. It's, as crazy as that may sound, I'm glad I was here. I'm glad I was able to help and contribute and help the city get through, and so thank you all, and we are
We may not be done. There may be some people in the room who want to sniff stuff up and say something.
Maybe.
So you can just sit down and listen if anyone else, I'll call on anyone.
I know. I asked Angelo, if, most people know Angelo served on the council, I said, would you like to stay for the entire meeting? Or should we go up and have a couple of beers at the Mountaineers game? So that's where we're going. We're going to the Mountaineers game.
Tough choice.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks a lot, everybody. Thank you, Bob. Angelo, wonderful to see you here.
Enjoy the game.
Okay, yeah. Great night for a game. You share the credit. I worked, I know how hard you worked. We worked together on many of those things. All right. Well, you're leaving. You're officially able to leave. All right. Back to Stevens and Associates Contract Amendment.
Bill, you want to, I actually was gonna, Tim had pulled it up, the consent agenda, Kelly is probably the most knowledgeable. Okay, this one. Do you have a specific question for Kelly or us, or?
I just wanted to chat. Kind of a couple. Just looking at it, seems like the options that are pressing out studying aren't the options that we kind of nodded that we preferred when we, after the report. So I know we didn't vote on anything, but so are these just like the allowable options that FEMA will approve? Is that what we're doing?
So it's a step, and I put Bob Stevens here on the line. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that, everyone. Clay Murphy, Assistant City Manager, I'm doing introductions here. So I've got Bob Stevens on the line here to answer specific questions, but this proposal is structured to really get at the codes and standards work. We did bring the final report that you blessed to FEMA. And what we need in the interim is to do some more detailed work to learn what it will cost to bring the buildings up to codes and standards, and then from there, evaluate if we will be reimbursed for the preferred option. So this is just a step along the way to get there. The final report that you did get did have numbers in it. And what we're looking to have Stevens and Associates do is take a closer look at that. What they've got in the report are sort of preliminary options, and it's likely that those costs will be actually higher upon further review. This proposal also does consider some design work, so that we will be able to advance at least to the level of codes and standards, which would be the sort of first level of review. So City Hall, for example, would be elevating utilities and dry floodproofing, knowing that we may choose, if we're able to, you know, based on the preference of council, to, you know, take that mitigation further. But what we want to do first is just make sure that we have accurate estimates. And we want to be able to provide that really solid baseline number to FEMA, because we kind of get, you know, one crack at it. I mean, I'm going to turn it over to Bob here, maybe for a little bit more detail, if that's possible.
It will be in a moment. There we are.
Did I, did I do it?
Bob, you're on.
Welcome, everyone. Bob Stevens. Can you hear me?
You're breaking up really badly.
Can you?
Little choppy, Bob.
Testing, can you hear?
Try turning on. That sometimes helps.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. You can hear me. Sorry, not sure what was going on with my speaker, my speakers. So Bob Stevens from Stevens and Associates and Kelly kind of summarized that, I think, very well. As we understood the process for FEMA to establish the amount that they will reimburse as part of insurance and grants, it became clear that this baseline, the minimum required to meet codes and standards, and so we needed to advance the design to increase the accuracy of the cost estimate to establish that baseline cost. Once we have that, this step, which is proposed here, done, that will allow us, even at a ballpark basis, to see whether additional funding would be available to move to what we identified last time as the preferred alternative. So as Kelly said, this is step one. You know, and we need to get this as accurate as possible, because there's also a timeline. We need to get this done and and submitted and reviewed and approved by FEMA by early January 25, which means we really need to move fairly quickly with this level of effort. So that, in consultation with Guide House, the recommendations on how to proceed, how we arrived at this first step.
Tim, do you have some questions?
I guess I'm still looking at, it's really the largest consulting fee we've approved since I've been on the city council, so it just feels like it's worth some merit to to work through this. So if we're pricing out options that aren't options we really intend to do, like what if we decide to not go with a fire station, sell it, and build a new fire station?
So what we're doing here with this amendment and why it is so expensive is because, you know, really, we need to establish that baseline cost to put everything back based on codes and standards. Those codes and standards are sort of the flood standards that we need to meet, but then also things like ADA, life safety, and a few other things we need to take a look at to make sure that we're meeting them. So this establishes sort of the baseline for FEMA to take a look at, and then on top of that, we get into the mitigation pieces. And that's where sort of the options within that report come into play. And so really, I mean, if you were sort of a binary choice, it would be sort of to fill or not to fill the basement. That's the question, right? And that will also then lead into other options, such as the fire station or what we do with the building over here. But that's all going to be predicated on, you know, what FEMA will allow for those costs. But first, we really have to have that baseline cost to then get into mitigation factors and then to do the baseline cost estimate that they will do. And so this establishes kind of like the baseline. That's the cost benefit analysis, sorry. But this establishes the baseline, then we'll be looking at mitigation, then we'll be looking at the cost benefit analysis. Then we'll be looking at mitigation. Then we'll be looking at the cost benefit analysis. So it just really sets the floor, if you will, for, you know, what FEMA will look at and what we'll get back from them. And really we're, we're taking this intermediary step to make sure that we can get sort of the most out of, um, the options available.
It, it's also worth noting that FEMA funds the, the minimum effort to meet codes and standards first, which, so we needed to identify with them, you know, what was the, the minimum cost alternative to meet codes and standards. And as that approaches, so other alternatives, then they're willing to discuss funding going to a more extensive alternative. Um, so although, as you say, this may not do, and, and a good deal of this cost is, you know, getting the, uh, buildings measured accurately to be able to do um, the, the preliminary design. And that's all data that you're going to be able to use for whatever you do with City Hall or the current fire station. It's going to include, you know, uh, floodproofing the fire to state station as is, which, and, and, and meeting other codes that are not flood. So I don't know that I, we were clear. Buildings that have substantial improvements, um, trigger, uh, having to come up to code with all other standards that the buildings might not be in compliance with currently, like ADA standards. So part of this cost is to look at an elevator in the fire, in the fire station. Um, to look at, uh, fire safety codes that because over time as codes have changed, you may not be compliant with, but those improvements to meet minimum codes and standards would be covered under your insurance plus FEMA grants. So we, we need to do those other code assessments, identify where those gaps are. We need to come up with a conceptual design, get a cost estimate and include that in the cost. And that's how we establish the, the minimum reimbursable from your insurance and FEMA. Once we've done all of that, um, at that point, we still have the conceptual design for say the new fire station or repurposing the old fire station. And then we can start to look to say, you know, are we approaching what those costs are? And FEMA would then be able to agree to spend the money we've identified in the codes and standards minimum towards those other alternatives. So we really have no choice but to go through this step-by-step process in order to establish this, um, contribution from your insurance plus FEMA grants. Um, that's how, that's how we establish the cost. And we want that to be what we were advised is that you really want to do due diligence on that cost because to the degree that you've, you know, we, we developed conceptual or what we'll call ballpark cost to compare different alternatives for you. Um, and they were relative, those costs were relatively accurate to compare alternatives, but they weren't a hundred percent accurate. So if we don't identify all of the things that are needed to be done, we run the risk of locking in, because that's what we'll be doing here is locking in your insurance and FEMA contribution. Um, and then, and then perhaps discovering work that needed to be done later as the design developed. So they recommended a 60% design for the minimum codes and standards. Um, I think we've approached a, uh, something that's, uh, that's a reasonable approach to getting, uh, getting us that far, but I don't know that it's fully 60%. Some areas are, other areas are not.
So Bob or Kelly, uh, is there any risk that, uh, the cost of this contract won't be covered by FEMA?
As far as we know, it will be.
Okay. Any other members have any questions? Sal?
Is that a yes? I mean, hey, this, I mean FEMA is willing to pay $365,000 to get this information so they can make a decision to spend another eight, 10 million dollars.
Right.
Yes. I mean, so we are, you know, um, bringing this to you based on the guidance that we've received from Guide House, um, who is the consultant that the state is working with on the special complex projects.
And is it, is it oral guidance or did somebody sign a document that said they would do that?
So Guide House has a contract with the state. Um, it was a verbal conversation, a verbal meeting.
Guide House is a consultant for the state that is helping the state and municipalities through these projects. We have a, you know, project person. Um, only FEMA can actually sign on the dotted line to say, well, they'll cover that, but they tell us this is a feat, this is an eligible cost, but.
Right.
I, getting hard answers out of FEMA is, you know, we, we, if we don't do this, we, we won't get any FEMA. And that's what it really was. But this is presumably what.
Right.
All the community.
FEMA is outlining that we're being told to.
And all the affected municipalities are getting the same guidance presumably.
They have public.
If they're doing something, yeah, if they have public losses. Anyone have any other questions?
Well, I, I guess I just don't, um, from the proposal, I don't. Uh, there, there's minimum codes and standards, and then there seem to be alternatives as well that we're estimating now. Why aren't, I mean, uh, and that's, that's sort of, in other words, we came through with, we had a preliminary estimate earlier on a certain amount of work um, with rough numbers. And FEMA said, we, we need better numbers on our minimum, which is codes and standards. But we seem to be going beyond that in, in this. And why is that?
I wouldn't say that we're going beyond in this proposal. Um, we are, we are meeting.
Just do, we're just doing the codes and standards. We're not talking about, we're not estimating the cost of a preferred solution.
No, in fact, what we want to do is be able to set that baseline so that then we have, you know, uh, we will know from FEMA then what they will reimburse for. So then we could assess those additional factors, those other options that may be.
Our own.
Yeah. That would mitigate further.
But it feels like on the scale of minimums, which is the word that's been used a few times, I guess I'm private sector and have been fending for myself, but I was very impressed with the first Stevenson company report in detail. This level, to me, it's like, for me, it's the equivalent of replacing two elevators or, you know, elevating a couple of homes. I mean, it's a lot of money. And are we really spending it in the best way to benefit our communities, my concern? Especially if they don't reimburse us. I think that would be awful.
Well, I was seeking assurance that they would be reimbursed and I'm comfortable in saying, yeah, this is part of what FEMA does here and across the country. This is part, part of their process. So I think we have assurance that we're going to get paid for this contract. Did you have something to add to that, Bill?
So just one other thing. So it's, you know, it's been a year since the floods. There's a deadline for this report to go, these numbers to go to FEMA, they'll have to mull it over. It'll be, be two years by the time they decide. I mean, is there, have they laid out a, a, an, an overall timeline that we can expect them to make a decision so that we can make a decision and actually get some stuff fixed?
So I wish we weren't in crystal ball territory here. Um, but you know, what I can say is that with this work that they're doing, you know, and what we've been told is that, you know, this project may be an alternative procedures project, which is what, um, Bob is referring to and he refers to this timeline that we've got to work towards. And so there's 18 months from the event to get these sort of cost estimates back to FEMA so that they can evaluate them. Um, and then from there, you know, we will know and we will have a series of other decision points. And so then those factors, at this point, we don't know. So we don't know what the timeline will be at that point. Um, but we do know that what we're working towards right now is to establish this codes and standards piece to know what our reimbursement profile will look like from FEMA. Um, within an 18-month period. And we'll also have some of the designs associated with codes and standards handled based on this amendment.
I think one, one thing to think about is this. If we're going to do anything to our buildings, even if we decided not to do anything with FEMA, we have to bring them up to codes and standards. So this is a design cost that we need no matter what. And then we would be spending those millions of dollars out of city money if we weren't getting FEMA money to, to do that work. Because we have to elevate our own utilities. We have to fix the elevators. We have to do all those things. We have to bring the fire station up. So, so the, so we're on the hook for, we have to make these designs no matter what. This is the way to do it in a way that we get paid for by somebody else. Um, with, 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 uh, your question about timeline, um, I just think we need to face this clearly. This is not going to be fast, uh, um, as much as we all wish it were. Uh, you know, Waterbury wasn't in a new town hall after Irene for over five years. And I mean, I think that's just a reality of the game. And so, I mean, we can try to push things. We're trying to get approval to do some small, you know, repairs and start putting things back together. So at least they look better and they're more functional. But in terms of massive, um, overhauls or rebuilding or filling basements or putting in, I think it's, it's going to be a long run because that's just how FEMA rolls and, um, it's extraordinarily frustrating. I think, you know, we've nearly had an exploding finance director a few times after, after calls with FEMA and, uh, you know, she's not here, but she would agree with me if she were. Oh, you are. Oh, there you are. I didn't see you back there. Yeah. Would you agree with that? Sorry, I didn't see you back there. You know, it, it might. I, I think we should approve this contract, but it might make sense to, at some point, uh, ask someone from FEMA or this contract, you know, this consult, Sultan from the state to come to us and just give us a briefing on, uh, what, what the time, what timeline we can expect and really this, the scope of, uh, what we're dealing with because none of us are experts on this stuff. Any other council member questions?
Just, just one.
Uh, thank you. So if we approve this contract, will we start spending money from our budget or we will just wait to hear from FEMA for the reimbursement? If we are planning to spend some money, what is the?
We have to, well, I'm serious.
Yes. We're not serious in this one.
We have our exploding finance director here to answer that.
Yes. Um, so we would have to front the money. It is a reimbursement basis, um, the public assistance recovery piece. So once they vetted the amount we would get to go towards this, um, they would start the reimbursement process based on, uh, there are options, I think, for them to front some and then for us to reconcile and request reimbursement. Um, but that is also why we have a flood line of credit and a loan from the bond bank for the flood recovery. Um, so that we have cash flow to be able to do these projects and wait for the money to come back from FEMA.
And so that line of credit and the bond, those aren't coming out of our appropriated, uh, regular general fund budget.
So right now, all of those things exist on their own in a FEMA fund and it is not impacting the general fund at the moment. Um, at some point when this is all said and done, there may be a true up if our in-kind match or our admin fees, um, don't cover the match that the state and the feds don't let, they don't cover. But I expect that exposure um, to be minimal and I'm doing my very best to keep it minimal. Um, but at some point in the next year or two years, we would need to, in theory, start building into the budget. Um, the FEMA match that can be set aside to cover any differential. Um, or we would have to long-term bond at the end.
Okay. Ellen, did that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm just like, I'm wondering how much money we will spend from, uh, city resources. So as far as I understood, we will not, right? Until the, uh, reimbursement decision coming from FEMA. It will not affect our general budget, right?
Not in this current year. It won't affect our general fund budget.
Okay.
Or in, or in 25, but in 26, 27, 28, it could.
But the, uh, will city council have a chance to approve or when we approve this contract, then it will be done?
It's not entirely related to this contract. It's related to all 46 of the damaged inventory items. So it's not just these buildings. We are incurring expenses on pump stations and culverts and stormwater and all sorts of things that we took damage from the flood to put back. And so each one of those items goes through as a project to FEMA and they evaluate, ask questions. And then eventually we get to a point after like 10 steps to obligate funds. And then we get tho, those funds get passed to the state and then kept to us. Right now this disaster is a 75% federal disaster. Um, our E R A F is 17.5%. And odds are it becomes a 90% disaster. So then the state will kick in, which leaves us exposed for around 3% um, of total costs at this time. But until it all shakes out, we don't really know. And some of the costs we've incurred to date involve our own labor that is budgeted. So that's part of our in-kind match that reduces our overall cost share.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Any more questions from members of the council? Uh, Steve, I see you're seeking to be recognized.
Uh, yes. Are the contracts, subcontracts for like the LIDAR and building management built in, are they included in the Stevens percentage? I'm trying to understand from this table, are we talking 11% of 5 million or 11% of 6 and a half million? What's the total amount going to Stevens? And is that including, are they subbing for the LIDAR work of the building Revit model and that, that, that we heard about?
I'm gonna let Bob answer this one.
Happy to. So, um, on the proposal, there's a table on page five, which breaks down the total cost for this amendment. And a portion of that is a percentage, which is the architectural structural N M P, which is a percentage of the estimated cost for the work that's being designed. And that is based upon, you know, typical design percentages and the fact that we're doing 20, 25% of that effort for a project of that scale. And then you'll see after that, a whole series of things that are not basic architectural services, including all of the subcontractors. So the answer specifically, the LIDAR is a subconsultant and it is included in our total fee. The historic preservation subconsultant is included in our fee. Um, there's money for code assessments. Uh, some of those code assessments may be done by subcontractors. We may do some of that in-house and so on. So, uh, this proposal is meant to be exclusive of all the design work necessary. The cost estimator is another subcontractor. But, um, we intended this proposal to be inclusive of all of the work necessary to develop these designs and cost estimates to meet this package, uh, in early November to send to FEMA, which would cover a, um, you know, 25, 30% design effort for these all, these three alternatives. Um, and, yeah.
So thank you. That, that, that helps. Uh, some of you may recall when we paid to design a garage that never got built, that the architect claimed ownership of the 3D model of that engineering work. Uh, will the city have clear ownership of the point cloud data from LIDAR and the 3D Revit model?
I'm happy to answer that as well. So, um, in the design industry, design professionals do claim ownership of the creative aspect of design. If you're designing a new structure, there's an element of that, that, um, uh, belongs to the design professional until they're paid in full. And then it, then it transfers over to the owner. Um, and most of this work, including the LIDAR and the, and the 3D model, all of that is being done. And, um, would be, would be owned by the, by the city and, uh, made available for any future work. So we were, for those who don't know what the LIDAR model is, today's, uh, method of creating existing condition drawings is to send a basically a very sophisticated camera inside and it accurately measures every square inch of the building. So it's very accurate. It's very valuable for future work. So you'll have a, you'll have a new 3D model of the fire station and the city hall, not the police station. Cause there's very minimal work at the police station, but the two, those two buildings will have new, um, uh, 3D models, uh, and that you'll be able to use in the future. Yeah.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. Anything else from the council?
Can I finish my questions?
Well, I'm, I'm curious about your time. You, how many questions do you have?
Uh, just two, I think.
Okay. Why don't you get them both out?
Okay. Yeah. No, I think I've heard more time was used in responses than there were my questions as far as your, uh.
So why don't you show us, say your questions.
Uh, what's our contingency plan if FEMA doesn't? Uh, what's our contingency plan if FEMA doesn't pony up and we're on the hook for, you know, three percent exposure of six and a half million is what I think I heard our treasurer say, but we could be eleven percent of six and a half million. If if I'm reading this correctly.
Okay, and your second question?
Yeah, I guess i- is this an uh an undefined loan amount that Montpelier citizens are loaning to the feds on the chance that we might get paid back?
I don't think that's a fair characterization. I think the fair characterization is that that this is as has been described to us, these are FEMA eligible expenses. And there's every expectation they will be uh paid back. This is not a casino operation we're going into.
And will the contract, subcontracts from our Stevens contract be available under public records law? I mean, this is a problem with putting things in into subcontracts is that I can't get to city hall. Those contracts won't exist here unless we specifically amend the contract or make sure that that provision is within the contract with Stevens.
Well, if if they're in the possession of the city, they'll be public records.
No, you're missing my point or you're avoiding it. The contract to with Stevens, if they're going to do the all this other work, LIDAR, et cetera, under subcontracts, our contract with Stevens needs to include that copies of all those subcontract documents be transferred to the city's possession such that they will be available to the public.
We can consult with our legal counsel about that. So.
Just just to clarify, when you say they need to be, that you would like that to be. That is not necessarily a legal requirement. That said, we'll we'll check with Mr. Stevens and see what we can do.
Well, transparency, if we know you're if your intent is to hide the true costs and the potential overages of this.
Okay, no one's, no one's intending to hide anything. Your your question's been answered. Folks, members of the council, are there any other questions? Is there a motion? There are motions direct the city manager to execute this contract? I will move that. I don't think we have much choice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just, because I'm going to vote no, I think I'd like to just say that I I feel that um the the costs that we're incurring, we're also going to look at the costs of a couple of years potentially of not being able to use our facilities to capacity. And I'm just having, knowing, because I'm doing this on our own properties and we're bringing them back. Um, we aren't going through these levels because we can't and we don't have to. But it just feels like it's so much money to do something that I know we're doing in other places for a lot less. Um, and we're doing it right. We're trying to do it well. We're hiring good contractors. You know, when you put in an elevator, we don't it it the elevator companies help with the design and bring in all those code pieces. I feel like there's just some duplication here over what's happening elsewhere. I just can't support it right now. If if you get the federal folks to come in and explain the process a little better, maybe that would help. But at the moment, I'm just, it just feels like kind of overkill for me.
I don't see anyone else have members of the council have anything to say before we move to a vote. I think this is everything that we have to do. We're, and this is all work that we have to get uh done and present the work product to FEMA so that we could get many millions of dollars from FEMA that is then many millions of dollars that the uh taxpayers of Montpelier are not paying uh for for these buildings. And it starts with getting this uh this work done. And so I, it was it was on the consent agenda because it really didn't seem like it was going to be that controversial, but one never knows. But if there's no other comments, I will uh start the vote and we'll start a roll call because I know it's, I expect it to be uh not unanimous vote. Starting on this end, Lauren?
Yes.
Uh, Palin?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Sal?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Adrian, I just noticed you got your your permanent uh nameplate. Congratulations. All right. Next up, we have community fund board recommendations.
Hi all. Uh, Chris is there in person. This is Mairead. Um, I've got some slides to share and also a uh a spreadsheet of our recommended amounts. And I'm not sure process wise if it worked. I guess I can't share via chat. I could email. It's a, it's in Google, but I can download and email it to Mary to send to you all. I can also project and just show it to you here first for us to all look at together.
Well, if you have it on your computer, I think you can call it up and then you will be given permission to share it. And I think I got the thumbs up so saying that you have permission to share your screen.
Okay, great.
You can go ahead and do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm going to start with our slides that give just a brief overview from our decision-making process this year. And Christopher, feel free to jump in. He's in the room, I think, still in person um with anything that I miss. So uh, we had a a, so this is for the um twenty twenty-five grant cycle. Our board has currently have four people on it. Um, and so we still have room for one more. If anyone wants to volunteer from the audience, uh, we are actually looking for a member. Uh, but so we had a bit of a, our work cut out for us this year. There are obviously a lot of pressing needs. And this fund is designed to cover a really wide variety of um different needs in our community. So when we were going through and considering, you know, when we had to make some tough decisions, uh, things, priorities that we were considering were mainly flood resilience and housing, just in light of what the past year has been like for us all. Uh, we did have an overall increase in applications of around ten thousand dollars. But we were working with the same budgeted amount for to give out awards as we were in the twenty twenty-four cycle. So a little bit more pressure on uh the total funds than in the past funding cycle. We also saw, this was just an interesting point, we thought we would bring to everyone's attention that there was an increase in the proportion of requested funds for the arts compared to the previous grant cycle. And I'll show you on the next page what that looks like specifically. So this breaks down the last two years, the requests that we receive and the awards that we are recommending. Um, we give out from the fund. So in twenty twenty-four, we had a total of about two hundred and fifty-seven, well, almost two hundred and fifty-six um thousand dollars requested. And out of that sixty-three thousand was arts and the rest was kind of other um other needs. And the total award amount that we gave out, one hundred and thirty-two for fifty, that amount became our fixed amount for this cycle. So this cycle, we had an increase, a ten thousand dollar incre- increase in requests for a total of about two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Out of that, though, there was this big increase in arts requests with, you know, ninety-seven thousand dollars. So we tried to keep that proportionality in mind also as we were making awards. Uh, so this, you know, I'll share these slides um in, I guess, PowerPoint format with Mary via email so that you'll have that on record. Um, uh, two, before I dig into specific awards, uh, two questions, concerns, things that we wanted to bring up for the future. The big one that was on our minds a lot was this continually, each year we're seeing an increase in the um, the number of sometimes, but mainly the total amount of um of funds that are coming in as requests. Um, but the amount that we are able to give out is, you know, limited by that that amount that we had asked for. We did ask for an increase uh over the past year, but um, we're not giving it. So we're a little bit concerned that I, if that pattern continues, if we still are working with this really limited set of funds, but getting increasing requests and we're having to say no to more of them, that eventually that might push some applicants back to the ballot. And the entire purpose of having this structure is to make that ballot more approachable, not, you know, super, super long with a lot of specific requests. Um, so we hope that the council keeps this in mind as we're going forward, looking at the next year's cycle. Um, consider increasing the total amount of funds available for uh the community fund. And then we also had a couple of questions just about, um, I guess, process. These things come up a lot. We we meet, you know, a couple of times a year and do this whole thing. We have I think this question also came up last year, um, which was there are a couple of applicants that we, the the board would like to share feedback with directly um about their applications and a little bit unsure about how how we should go about doing that. Um, obviously, our meeting in which we make these decisions is open to the public. We don't typically get much attendance. So if someone shows up in there, they'll they'll know about those sort of questions that we had. But we are wondering, um, kind of after the fact, how how we might improve processes for um sharing feedback with with some of our applicants. So that's the overview. Um, I will, I'm going to switch over to the tab now that shows the specific amounts. This is really big. Oh, wait. Sorry, I stopped there. Wrong version. That's the big one. I wanted to do the small one. This is Christopher's very detailed. Every single one for the past several years. I made it simple.
While you're looking for it, I just wanted to make another comment as well. Uh, the, in a, you know, it's sort of a little bit masked that there's only a ten thousand dollar increase in requests. There's actually a fifty percent increase in applications. So there were a lot more no's that we had to make this year over the previous year. So last year we had thirty-two requests. This year we had forty-eight requests. And I can't imagine that that's going to get any smaller. Um, and I do think as as was mentioned, that it may mean that some organizations that are getting less than they want from the community fund or getting denied um may choose to go uh to the voters directly at town meeting day, uh, which I think is not what you're hoping for out of this process.
Yes. Okay, I found it. My file organization, my my, what's it called? Naming conventions, we're not up to snuff. All right, here we go. Um, thank you, Christopher, for adding that in. All right. So this is, um, this is a two-year comparison. We left the twenty-four in there. Um, we look at that, you know, when we're several past years' history, when we're making these recommendations, but our twenty-five is this um far right column. That's probably teeny tiny for you all. I'll make it bigger and zoom in. All right, so um, we've got this far column is the amount recommended in E, um, and D is the amount that was requested. We were really not able to give the full amount for many um grants at all. When we made awards, we, for the most part, are making a partial award. Um, so these are general fund ones are at the top. Uh, we've got all all greens belong. Uh, we recommended seven hundred fifty out of thirty-eight hundred. American Red Cross, we said not to fund. Do you all want me to go through line by line like this to just state the amount?
You all have the list.
I don't think you need to do that. We have those amounts.
Okay. So, yeah, there, you know, as you can see, the the main thing that we want to draw everyone's attention to is the fact that there are just very few things that we are able to fund fully. Um, most things we were making a, making a partial award, if any award at all.
Mairead, I I was wondering, as you were uh presenting the the big categories for year over year, did you, if um did you notice groups that got zero awards last year coming back again this year or or dropping out this year?
Hmm. That is a good question. Some folks who did not, who got a zero word did come back again this year and ask for another. We do have last year's data here. Um, some came back asking for more. Some came back with the same ask. Yes.
Yeah, some back with a lower ask and but a lot of new ones.
Yeah.
We honestly generally didn't fund many new projects.
Yeah.
Adrian?
So thank you for this presentation and for the information. Um, I know this has been a longstanding um board for the city and I think just and I will say, most of the people on this list are all my friends and I love them and they're the most amazing organization. They make Montpelier what we are and that's why we live here. Uh, one of the things I was wondering was, do, how do other cities across the country fund organizations like this? Because just thinking about how we're stretched at the city, how this comes out of the general fund, how you're, you know, the increase of application, the increase of funding, like this is going to be here. Like, there's going to be a need in our community. And can our general fund continue to support, you know, the increased applications over time? So I was just wondering how other cities fund these types of activities. Are there foundations? Are there organizations? Like, do they come out of the city's general funds normally? Like, what is the structure that you know, partner cities may have? And are we, is this a best practice? I just wanted to learn a little bit more about the history of that.
This might be. Yeah, I'll, well, you know, I think I sent you the the history of it. I can't really speak definitively for around the country because every state has a different sort of funding and revenue mechanism. I know, for example, a community that used to work in the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, it gets, they're a direct recipient of C D B G funds, Community Development Block, right? So they use those monies for this program. We're not a direct recipient. We have to apply for the state for C D B G money. So only for, and there's specific criteria. So we're not eligible to do that. So speaking Vermont particularly, every agency in here, in every town and city, has the right to petition to be on the ballot. And um, so there, there's a little bit of an end around. We're, we're, we can be on the hook for spending this money out of our general fund anyway. Many communities now do this kind of thing where you apply and they do a screening and put through. Most agencies, and that may change, as you pointed out, given the the things that haven't been funded. It's easier than going out and getting six hundred names on a signature, particularly in the winter, getting ready for town meeting and certainly during the COVID years. So people liked this process. Um, but the alternative, if we were to just cut this out, as I would predict that uh something close to the two hundred and somewhat thousand total asks would be on our ballot in March and voters would be voting yes or no on those items. They'd probably be one at a time. So they'd be, what, what'd you say, forty-eight applicants?
There were uh forty-eight applicants.
So there would be forty-eight additional ballot items. Some of, some of us remember when we used to have twenty or thirty ballot items uh that way. And this was created by the city council to try to manage the process, not have all the ballot items to and to um have a, have the applications actually screened by a group so that the money was going to the the most effective places, not that everybody isn't deserving. Uh, so it's it's a conundrum. Uh, I know in the state, I think everybody does it. You know, we, for years, we had a policy that if you had been, if you had been on the ballot and we're, and the voters passed you and you're asking for the same amount, we just put it in the budget as a line. And if you were either wanted an increase or you were a new person, then new agency, then you had to petition to be on. But once you've been passed once or twice, then you went into the base. And that kept growing. So at some point, the council said this, you know, this is kind of just worth the the will of whatever somebody asks for and whether they get petitions, let's do this more thoughtfully. And so that's how we ended up with this process. So you know, I, it's a great question. I'd also say just uh from our perspective, that if these services weren't in place and we weren't paying for them this way, we would be paying for them through other, through our police department, through our fire department, through our other services, we'd be creating positions to deal with these issues. Many of these people are dealing with issues that are not our expertise, but they're handling problems and issues that are in the community that people need these services.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't fund these because these are critical. That's why we live here. These are very important services. Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't fund these because these are critical. That's why we live here. These are very important services. I'm just wondering if we should explore other opportunities for grants like the community block grant you said we're not eligible for as a city, but are there, and maybe the grant committee can take a look. I will charge myself into exploring opportunities um that may help supplement this, especially if you do increase your applications, like how can we expand this program? That is not, you know, taking money from the general fund of Montpelier. How can we supplement this budget and even increase it so that we can support those applications, but think creatively on where there is funding that we can secure? Um, that's what I'd be interested in seeing.
Council girl, I'm sure the committee would be happy to talk to you about any ideas for increasing the budget. Uh, we do have one question that I, I think maybe for the city manager, but um it could also be answered by the council. Uh, as you know, it's sometimes hard to fill these positions on city commissions and committees. Um, and we were wondering if it is possible to recruit from the youth population of the city for membership.
Right.
This commission, do you have to be 18?
Hmm. I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Great. Thank you. We'll be talking to the high school.
Well, you, you may have noticed that there is a, a, an item later on on the agenda about creating a youth uh youth committee.
Awesome.
To in, encourage more uh more involvement from, from younger people in the community.
Great. So many of these proposals obviously affect you, are driven by you, organized by you, that would be great to have their voice.
So what you're asking for tonight is our approval of the uh the recommendation for all, all these expenditures. The month money's already been appropriated by the voters, but how the money is allocated is decided based on your recommendation to us.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Any council members have any questions or, or thoughts? Lauren.
And I would just thank the committee, just being, doing this work is so important and valuable. So really grateful. Um, and I do think like the ability to go through thoughtfully and just understand, you know, what is gonna be most impactful for the community so that we can be putting forward a suite of things. Um, that's great. So thank you for that work. Um, I, I love the idea of exploring if we could partner with some foundation or something to supplement these, these needs. If there was some, you know, way we could do something like that up, seems like a great thing to explore. Um, but in the meantime, just wanted to say thank you all.
Steve, are you seeking to be recognized?
Yes, please. Steve Woodruff again. Uh, I'm curious about the scrutiny or due diligence of looking at other sources. I know that Good Samaritan Haven got a $5 million from the Housing Conservation Board. And they don't need $18,000 from us right now, you know? They're only taking care of about half of the unhoused population. You know, they're keeping cameras on people sleeping, you know? Transgender bathroom battles going on at our shelter without any public records transparency. You know, the just basics. I appreciate that they run the food pantry and potentially have a hand in the farm up there, but their, their $15,000 here is going to food delivery, which is directly competing against the food for the unhoused to, on a walk-in basis. Because the boxes for the food delivery get packaged and whisked out the door before the people who have no refrigeration or no cook kitchen get to pick it up. So I just think that these nonprofits are not sufficiently accountable or transparent to, for, you know, we hold a budget priority public hearings, and yet all of this stuff is in effect off budget. We didn't get to comment on any of this stuff while we were putting the budget together, and now it's being paid out of, out of our funds. So there, these non-pro, I'm curious about the night, the teen center. Is, is it even, did it relocate? Is it functional right now? Cause it's certainly not in our city hall basement. But do they need 15,000 if they're gonna be out of business for another year? But Montpelier Alive asked for 10 and a half, 10,500 and was zeroed out. Montpelier Alive played an invaluable role, better than city government, I would say, in the flood response. And yet we're zeroing them out when they're most strategically positioned to partner the business community with the unhoused to, to, to create some bathrooms and showers or job opportunities? Or to maybe do a better job than our city management on getting the wifi, you know, up and running. It's, I, I think that this is not well informed and it's not accountable to the city government. You can't delegate uh your responsibilities as council members to this unelected board to then do a half scrutinized job. But to give another 18,000 to Good Samaritan Haven while they've got $5 million sitting in the bank or some portion remaining thereof, it's just absurd. So, you know, Montpelier Alive played, played a role in finding cooling services and getting the tourist center and public restrooms, you know? You've never heard me say good things about Montpelier Alive in the past is because of the transparency and accountability. But there's new leadership there that uh didn't have me arrested for making a public art display of public toilet, the lack thereof. Five years later and y'all have done nothing about that, you know? I hope you sleep well at night.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on this issue? Or is there, is there a motion to approve this uh proposal?
Love it, bro.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And, and Mairead and Chris, thanks for doing this work. It's uh it's a lot to go through all these proposals and uh make informed judgments about what, how we should be spending our money. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks all.
Next up, we have uh traffic calming.
I think we have two residents here that would like to speak to this while they're coming up and introducing themselves. I'll just say we did receive a formal request uh from uh residents near the Cummings Street area and have received a second inquiry at least uh about another area. Uh, and the requestor, although neither of you are Larry, but uh that's okay, uh had asked specifically that the work be done. We're gonna be paving Cummings Street later this year, that, that work be done consistent with that as, and some of you may recall that the council went through, the council and the uh traffic committee went through a pretty extensive process to develop a policy for evaluating these things. So this is actually our first request since we've adopted the policy. So just wanted to tee that all up, turn it over to, I think, the requesters.
My name is Piper Evans. This is my wife, Patricia Shagnon. We are residents of Cummings Street and I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. I have learned through this process that this is a new process and we're actually grateful to be able to be heard. Um, it is a longstanding issue, I understand, though we are new residents. We have uh been there for a year and a half. And in the short amount of time that we've been there, we are the ones who had our home hit by the truck. And I'm gonna say an inebriated driver and it's a resident of the street. Um, so uh we've, we've had to deal with some significant challenge. Um, are welcome to the, to the town. Um, and that alerted us to the issue. Um, and of course, because we live on the town, we interact with a great deal of the speeding that happens there. Um, but we've come to, to recognize that um that, that part of it, the issue is that the, that the residents at the end of the street, and I, I don't mean to be able to, to point a finger, but that is unfortunately a chronic issue. We have since learned from the police, um, that it is a chronic issue. Um, so we did have this incident where our, our house was hit by a speeding truck. Um, and there are incidences, for example, of four-wheelers that are regularly speeding up and down the street. And even as recently as two weeks ago, um, again, one of these residents was um speeding and hit and completely broke a telephone pole. Um, these are just a couple of incidents of which we're aware that impacted us uh directly. Um, it, it also, I, I thought was interesting to realize in living there that um, um, it's FedEx, it's UPS, it's Domino's delivery, it's all of those things also are speeding on that road. Um, as well as um the, even the uh, the town shuttle bus speeds on that road. So while on the one hand, we sort of found ourselves targeting some of the residents of the street, it's actually broader than that. Um, and um, what we really wanted to bring to the council's attention is this, this street, I think, is perhaps different than some others. It's not a main artery by any stretch of the imagination. It is an offshoot, small road. But it's a primary access to the North Branch Trails. So while the residents absolutely are aware of issues, it's actually impacting a larger part of the Montpelier popu- population. So we have an awful lot of people who walk their dogs, people who walk their children, uh, people who are bicycling, uh, people who are cross-country skiing, any number of activities that Montpelier really wants to boast and be proud of and have access to the North Branch Trails. Um, we don't have sidewalks and the houses are really literally right on the road. Um, there's no place for people to even hop off the road. Um, it, it's really gotten to a point where it's, well, quite literally dangerous. And um, I take care of dogs. I'm constantly concerned about dogs. There are plenty of people who live there who have small children. They're very concerned about their small children. I don't like to be alarmist, but it does seem to me that we're just ticking time away from an animal or a human being hurt, seriously hurt. And so we would really like to bring this to your attention and ask, please, would you consider um speed bumps for this road? We have worked with police. We have asked how to best do this. Sergeant Philbrick has been very supportive. Uh, put up um monitors of speed, which apparently there's a process for that. It's a limited amount of time where they collect the data, but they have collected it. Um, the rest of this uh police department has been very supportive and asked us to call continuing, continually whenever there is an issue that happens. We have done that. They've been very supportive. There's a lot of reasons that we've had to call and there's an awful lot of times that we've had to have police come out and, and follow up on this. We'd really like to um have you all consider allocating funds where the um paving is already planned. Uh, to have these speed bumps put in that could significantly aid in the safety of the residents as well as people accessing the North Branch Trail. I know that my neighbor who has been on the street for over 30 years, I believe, Jeannie Lowell is also on the call. I don't think she dropped out. Did she drop out?
No, she's here.
Okay, and I know that she wanted to speak to some of the longevity of the issue. This is not isolated and it's not just happening in the time that we have been there. Um, and I also wanted to make mention of Larry Martin, who is the um landlord of the apartment building that is also on Cummings Street, who has also had to deal with speeders hitting his apartment building and having to fix a great deal of damage. Um, these, again, they're not isolated incidences and we would just really implore your considering allocation of, of funds for speed bumps for that street.
Thanks. Do, any members of the council have any questions? Nope, um. Okay, have, have you been in touch with the Department of Public Works to? Have, have you at this point filled out the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and where does that stand?
Oh, as far as I know, I've submitted it and that was the extent of my awareness of what needed to happen. Um, I did ask for a reply, but I know that people are, are busy and I didn't receive one. So I'm just hoping it's out there and has been received. Um, I know that Larry was able to submit his and had contact that it, yes, had been received. Um, I know that two um residents of the apartment complex have submitted um as well, as well as uh Jeannie Lowell, as well as Sierra Lowell. Um, all of us who are um residents on the street who've, who've uh had direct impact, um, have submitted in order to support this um system that you folks have. If there's something more that we need to do, we're very hap- happy to do it. Um, I know again that, that Sergeant Philbrick has uh collected a, an amass of data and we've asked questions around how best to present this to you folks. If we needed to have um numbers of the incidences, like there are, there are numbers attached to each incident that was not recommended at this stage. I'm not sure if there's another stage where you would need that. If we need to compile that, we'll do that for you.
First, I can confirm we received your
Thank you.
Uh, application. And the, the process that really follows is doing just that, collecting all that data, all the numbers, putting that all together. That's part of what happens next. I think this came up, we were contacted first by Mr. Martin and he said, can I go to the council meeting? And we said, sure.
And he couldn't be here today.
Well, it's great that you folks are here. It was like, yes, you can, and we have this process and you should file the application.
Right, right.
It's, you know, it's great to raise the awareness of the issues and why we're doing it. For us to the council, whether they send us through the process or just make their own decision.
If I understood, I, I wanted to make sure I understood you correctly, if I may. Um, did, did you need us to collect that data?
No.
Or is that another?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, the police chief's here and he's sending you stuff right now.
Delightful.
Yeah, there, there's a whole process up to, to give a little background. Um, for a few years, I was on the committee called the Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee. And we spent a good bit of time going, developing a, a process to evaluate requests for traffic calming. Because we feared, well, there, there might be any number of people who want traffic coming in their neighborhood and uh can't just necessarily say yes to everybody who wants one. So we, uh, we developed this whole process to uh get feedback from all the residents in the neighborhood to uh to measure the amount of traffic and the speed of traffic going through. Um, I don't remember what, all the uh
I believe there's another piece where the residents are notified or uh asked if this is something that they would support. So my understanding is that that piece happens at some point.
Yes.
I am not clear when that happens. And a piece of what we're curious about, um, i- is because it seems uh that the DPW has in fact been prepping the street for paving. Um, we want to make sure that we're timely and able to dovetail with that.
Yeah, and what I can say is that uh, one of, we're, one of the things we're concerned about is that um, we want to make sure that all the residents are heard because the, the one, there might be a couple of people who really strongly favor it and uh get very motivated to do everything that you've done, but uh, but once we talk to all the neighbors, we might find out, well, there's only two people who want it. I'm not saying that's the case in your neighborhood, but it's, it's the kind of thing that can happen. And nobody's ever got, have, has ever done this before. For as long as we, we've only had the policy for a few years, but nobody's ever uh initiated the process.
It's not true.
No? Well, I'll, I'll get to you, uh, Jeannie, but but we've not had this process happen before. And so um, I'm very interested in seeing how the process plays out. And Adrian.
I'll, I'll just say that the work process scares me a little bit in this situation. I feel like there is a sense of urgency. I have read the number of incidences on your street and there's clearly an issue.
Yeah.
And if I live there, I would be very concerned about my children. I know that they play out in the streets, there's dogs. I mean, I frequent that area with my bike. And there is a process, I understand, collecting data, like I am a data-driven person and I understand that that structure is in place. But I would like for us to consider, we do have some data, there is some reportable incidences. You know, maybe there's recommendation from DPW, the police department, like what can be done as a stop gate now to prevent continued accidents. Um, I mean, it's not just traffic. It looks like there's a whole slew of It looks like there's a whole slew of reportable items on this street. So there's traffic is one issue, but there's, you know, what is the root cause? What are some ways that we can boost this neighborhood so that people feel safe? It's, you know, open to neighbors. It's a welcoming area. I mean, that's what we want for all of our neighborhoods. And I'm hearing that's not how it feels and some of the data is reflecting that. So what do we do now while simultaneously going through that process of traffic calming? Because we do have that process, but I feel like that's just not good enough for the right now to make sure that our neighbors are protected and God forbid, a child gets hit because a car is flying down the road. I don't want that coming to city council. I don't want that on my shoulders. So I feel like the flag is being worn for us.
Thank you for your support.
Lauren.
Uh thanks. Yeah, I mean, I wonder, I feel like a while ago, we'd had some presentations from the Transportation Infrastructure Committee where there were like a number of things, like you can put like planters out or something like you. So I wonder if there's like a temporary thing we could try as we go through this process. You know, to to see it, can we through some non-permanent means, you know, try this out, see if this is successful and be going through the process in the meantime for a more permanent solution? I mean, I, it does seem frustrating if we're gonna end up paying more money to do this in six months if we're paving the road this summer. So I don't know how long this process needs to take, if there's a way to try to sync it up and do it. Um but I don't know what the timeline for paving is. Um it like how how imminent that is. But like it would, it seems like it would be ideal if we could try to do this process, get through it and line it up so that if we're paving the road already, that that could be built into the paving plan and minimize costs at least. Um but also just wondering about in the meantime, if if we could like send to our transportation committee, the I just remember there were a whole bunch of things you could do, like cones or like the things like that that are, like you could just put out that can that do work to slow down traffic. Um so there might be other alternatives in the meantime.
Bill, do you know, um, did you uh find out from the Department of Public Works if there's a cost differential?
There are, yeah, so so there are a couple of people on from Public Works right now. I think they're trying to figure out who the who should be responding to this. Uh both Kurt and Cory are on. Cory kind of handles this. Uh so I think I see Cory's lineup and so they'll be able to give you um, give you a little bit more handle on on it from their perspective.
Great. I will call on Cory, but first uh Tim had his hand up with a question.
Just thinking, kind of along the line Lauren was and Coming Street's on my, on my regular running route, so I I've spent some time over there, but uh I'm quite slow, so I spend more time than I should. But it's just thinking about immediate things, like as soon as we pave it, it's gonna be a runway.
Right.
Um is there some logic to saying dirt roads in and of themselves are a bit of a traffic calming technique?
Not yet.
But it will be worse paved. You, I, it's like every time we do a paving project, we have police afterwards to check on people because people speed up and it's a nice smooth piece. So it's just something to think about. And and the other one is just thinking of temporary measures that we see using once in a while. Um I've seen some bigger inflores in town have like the temporary speed bumps they can install in their parking lots, but then they pick them up in the winter for plowing and things. But it would seem like if you had something like that, you could put down and move around, then it it keeps people on their feet more than if it's just like one on each end.
Yeah, I think I'd let uh one of our experts speak to that. There may be, some of those may not be approved for public road use. They might only be for private use, but I'll let Cory answer that. Cory, you're up.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Um so the the idea of the uh cost savings, so when the city contracts their citywide paving program, um it's usually with a very large paving contractor um who is still probably gonna give you a premium price to do work like this, even if it's part of the overall contract. Whereas if you come in later with a smaller contractor, who maybe does a lot of driveways and parking lots and and road patches, um and may already have work signed up for Montpelier in Montpelier. It's easy for them to mobilize, come in and do this and give you a pretty good price on it. So I'm not completely um confident that the price savings is there, um making it part of the overall paving budget and doing it separately. Um the other thing I heard, so yeah, Tim just mentioned, um you know, the when a street is paved, typically, yes, the streets, the the speeds go up. Um but we want to do and what our plan is to do is to collect that data that we need after the street is paved, so we know what that is. Right now, there's no um variable that can be plugged in, that can give you a um exact what the difference is gonna be between what a street is and what the speeds are gonna be after a s- a street is resurfaced. So we want to make sure we know the conditions on the street so that appropriate measures can be put in. Um so that is, that was our plan when we received these. Actually, it was our plan back, uh we received a request for this neighborhood before and that was the plan, was to pave the street, collect the data, go through the process. Um and that still is the plan unless we hear otherwise. Um and that will also, you mentioned something in the short term, that data will also allow us to um work with the police for pinpoint enforcement, because it'll break it down for fifteen minutes of the day. So they don't have to spend all day out there. Certain times a day, we're seeing higher speeders. Um we can give that to them to help them enforce the speed limit on that street.
And Cory, um the question was raised about uh temporary measures like uh putting flower pots or something or putting those temporary uh speed bumps. And then the other question I have is, is the speed limit there twenty-five the way it is in the rest of the city?
It is, yes.
Okay, so what about those uh temporary measures, the uh the movable berms and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing written into the current policy about that. It doesn't mean things can't be tried. Um there's just no exact language that says it's appropriate here, it's not appropriate there. These items are appropriate. There there's nothing, it doesn't go into temporary measures.
Uh huh. Are you the person who's responsible for administering the overall traffic calming uh policy?
So yeah, I work with the traffic committee to um to do that.
May I ask a question?
In our, in our typical, this was kind of a a monkey wrench that was thrown into this here because um, you know, our typical, we we would receive an application, get back to that person with the process, we plan to collect data, et cetera. This, it doesn't usually come to the council like this at the early stage. You guys see it at the end of the process and approve the final plan.
Mm-hmm.
So um if we haven't immediately gotten back to any applicants, that's why this this meeting kind, we knew this meeting was happening, so we'll respond afterwards.
And a couple of questions that fol- follow on that are um how long is, how much time is built into having this process take? And uh would it still would it take so long that it would push it out beyond uh this year's uh paving season?
So we rely on the Regional Planning Commission to use their um speed tubes for data collection. So some of it is reliant on their schedule. The other, the other way this was intended to work was uh we go through this process and then we have the ability to go through a budget session and we can identify traffic calming projects within the CIT, so we're prepared for it monetarily. Um and then we would construct the next year. That's how it was intended to flow.
I see.
Would would it be okay if I say a thing or two? Um uh first, I wanted to ask the question that there there have in fact been data collected on the street as a dirt road. Um I I think it would be obvious that it's only going to increase as a paved road. But regardless, the data has in fact been collected. Could that be used and speed the process forward? And then also closely on the heels of that, um and Jeannie will speak to this more clearly, but um there have been requests put in as twenty seventeen. So it it's it's really not new. And while I recognize that the process is new and I recognize that that, you know, we're all learning how to navigate that process, the topic is not and engagement with the community is not new.
Adrian, I think I saw your hand, had your hand up. Okay. Um Jeannie, you don't have your hand up now. Do you want to be recognized?
Um I don't have a way to raise my hand for some reason, so I'm doing it this way.
Okay, well, I'll I'll recognize you.
Okay, thank you. Um I'm I'm sorry I'm not there, but I've been traveling for three and a half weeks and those of you who know me can tell from my appearance that this is vacation head. Um so I'm glad to be able to participate via Zoom. Uh I hope you can hear me better than I can hear you. Um I heard a couple of points I want to address. Uh but first I will begin with the historical perspective on this. Um Piper and Pat are correct that I started this conversation requesting speed bumps, not in two thousand seventeen, but in two thousand eighteen. And I have, I can document the uh email exchange with Tom McCardle and Corey Lane and it's some some guy Zach was involved at some point. Um and when I commented that we haven't been through this process before was not true. What I meant was it has been raised before. And in a June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over the history of all the email exchanges. But in June of two thousand twenty-two, Cory um said that he considers my email or emails as a, as an initial request that the Transportation Committee to consider, quote, "So when the plan is approved, Coming Street will already be in the queue and we can start the process." So, and that's the last word I had then. I followed up in May of this year and I didn't get any further emails on it. Um but I do want to comment on my, I want to make some comments about my read of the Transportation Committee Traffic Control Program document. I don't know if that's the correct title, but it's the thing that contains the application. Um as has been said, I won't belabor the point, but Coming Street has a seriously dangerous problem with speeding vehicles that's already caused substantial damage to personal property. I want to add to those two incidents. Um an incident that happened very recently in my front yard in the middle of the day. I was standing in my front yard. My ten-year-old granddaughter was just across the street in my neighbor's front yard. Neither of us very far away from the street, which by the way, is a narrow, barely two-lane street. There's no room for planters. That would be very nice or median or whatever. There's really no room for accessories like that. Um but back to the point that I was making. Um a very large pickup truck came speeding down, came across the bridge, around the corner and gunned it. I don't know how fast they were going, but they were going so fast that the truck fishtailed its tail end going um forty-five degrees one way, forty-five degrees the other way, three times. I was afraid that either I or God forbid, my granddaughter was gonna be struck down by it. My granddaughter was terrified. So that's not involving personal property. That's in, that's involving the safety of life and limb. And while I'm a great proponent of the democratic process, the popular vote is not appropriate to rely on when it comes to safety measures. So I, especially when the source of the problem is that the majority of the people on our street live down at the end of the street with, and that's where the source of the problem is. So um it frightens me to think that this is gonna be determined by popular vote. Um, okay, so someone already mentioned there's no sidewalks. Not that sidewalks would really provide any degree or any measure of safety because what we're talking about has no disregard, has no regard rather for houses or telephone calls. Sidewalks are not going to be any effective means of safety. Um so the we, the the document that I'm referring to, I don't know the correct name. Traffic calming document defines would, the definition of a neighborhood street is what would define Coming Street. Um and uh speed bumps are the only identified measure that would effectively reduce speed on that street. So according to the criteria in the document, speed bumps would one, help ensure speeds reasonable for a neighborhood setting, would increase safety for non-motorized users, would reduce collision frequency and severity, would reduce speed, would would reduce the need for police enforcement, would promote conditions which enhance the community environment, including pedestrians, cycle, cyclists and transit use, would reduce vehicle speeds without impacting vehicle volume or movement. And we were talking about the cost of this. Um in an email from Tom McCardle, in fact, in two thousand seventeen, that's when I started talking about the need for repaving. I wasn't even bringing up speed bumps then. He told me that Coming Street had most recently been paved in nineteen ninety-two. That's thirty-two years ago. He also told me the street condition had been assessed and was awarded a score of fifty out of a hundred. He offered at that time in two thousand seventeen, Coming Street, quote, "was overdue for substantial maintenance." I would argue that whatever cost might be associated with adding two, maybe at most three speed bumps can be offset by the savings the city has realized by delay and deferment of maintenance of Coming Street. Um I guess I'll leave it at that. I'll, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thanks, Jeannie. Adrian.
So, I mean, it sounds like this situation has been going on for at least for seven years. So at this point, there has been data, there's been complaints. We have, you know, we have records of issues that are happening in this neighborhood and we do have a policy and a process to go through. Is that necessary at that, at this point to go through this process of getting speed bumps when there has been documented issues on this street for many, many years? And in addition to speed bumps, it looks like there's other issues happening in this area. So layering in other services, police, patrol, what could we do as a city to ensure that this neighborhood is safe, our families are safe, our children are safe, our animals are safe? Like what does that look like for us as a city and what can we do now to protect them? Instead of going through a process that they've been trying to go through for six years, I think I think it's something we really need to think about and the bureaucracy at this point, I think we just, my opinion is they've had enough, they've collected enough data, let's try to solution at this point.
Well, it's our policy. We can, we could take other action if we want. Tim and then Sal.
I was just gonna suggest, this is agenda item eight out of twenty-something agenda items tonight. Um would you like to make a motion so we can vote and keep moving? Please?
So let's see what the motion would be. Let's take a look. So we have a policy.
While you're looking, I do just want to respond a little bit because I think it's important not only for folks here that are attending, but people. The reason there's a a vote, uh part of that, I I certainly understand the concern that that was raised is that uh in national studies of traffic calming, if there's not a substantial support in a neighborhood for it, they fail. And what that looks like is they get put in and then other people who hadn't been consulted hadn't had a say in it, then come in and complain and this towns and cities end up taking them out. You know, we didn't want speed bumps. Why did you put it in? Why weren't? And so this policy, I think, was intended to match the national data that said you've got to get buy-in at the beginning. So, you know, it's not just a popular vote, it's to have an effective process. So I'm not saying you have to follow it, but someone said shouldn't So I'm not saying you have to follow it, but someone said shouldn't just be decided by popular vote. And I, I do think safety shouldn't be decided, I agree with that statement. The reason is that there is national data on traffic calming particularly and its acceptance in neighborhoods.
So.
While Adrian is ruminating on a motion, does the city have experience with speed bumps elsewhere? I mean, I know there were some in the Meadow and.
Yeah, so the only place, I will defer to DPW on this, Kurt. I see Kurt's hand up, so maybe he can answer that.
Kurt, why don't you go ahead and answer that?
Yep, hi, this is Kurt Monica, Public Works Director. So yes, the Meadow is the only area, I believe, that we do have. They're called speed tables. So it's kind of a long, kind of gradual bump rather than the small, sort of the ones that we're talking about as temporary. But I also, the reason I raise my hand is the estimated cost, I think, for a speed table, which maybe is the appropriate measure for this street, is about $10,000 per table. So if we're gonna approve this, there could be an impact on the overall paving budget. Somewhere between $5,000 to $10,000 per table. We don't know until we get, you know, unless we bid it out. So I just want to have council recognize that there is a financial impact and that we may have to adjust our paving plan because this is not a budgeted item. And the other, the other piece I wanted to note is without, you know, collecting the data post, post-resurfacing of the street, we don't really know the correct spacing for those. So we don't really know how to design them. So if there's gonna be a motion to put these in, you know, I'd ask council how, to identify how we fund it and, and how we go about, you know, designing it without, without having the data that we need to do it, you know, to standards.
Thanks, Kurt.
Can I just follow up? Kurt, I was curious about the effectiveness of the speed tables in the Meadow.
Those are put in a really long time ago, so I, you know, I wasn't directly involved. You know, I, I expect that they do, that they are effective. But I, again, I wasn't involved in that process. It was kind of before my time.
Councillor Gill, do you have a thought?
Cannot think of a motion. I'm looking at your flow, the flow chart in this process. And it says, collect data, MTIC defines the area impacted, initial neighborhood support survey, neighborhood meeting, traffic calming plan design, initial temporary traffic measure controls, neighborhood survey for plan support, plan approval by city council, construction of approved plans. So that's the flow chart of the process. But it sounds like you want to pave the road, collect data on the paved road before collecting more data?
Well, let me make a suggestion. You know, I'm, I don't own this motion, but I, I think what you're getting at is that you would like to waive this policy and direct the Department of Public Works to install up to two speed tables in, in the current paving season. And so I think the motion would be direct the, you, one, waive the policy, two, direct the installation of two speed ta, up to two speed tables, and three, have that be based on traffic studies, traffic data collected after the road is paved. That's what I think you're getting at, but I'm not, don't want to put words in your mouth.
I'm wondering if you could make an amendment to that and use the data that has been collected.
Who's, who's speaking?
Oh, sorry, this is Sierra Lowell.
Okay, Sierra, would you please hold off? I just recognized councillor hurl to speak. So you will have a chance to speak. And there's someone in the room who'd also like to address the council. So we'll go through that process. Lauren.
I'm just wondering about, like, to Kurt's point about having a budget plan, having, like, if we could ask city staff to come back with a plan that's an expedited process with an expectation that, based on what we know, the plan is to install speed tables, you know, unless we learn something that blows our mind, that is different than we realize or there's some other solution that's better. But like, to come back with a plan for how we would fund this and how we can have an expedited process to move this forward, this paving season.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, so the, the motion is to direct cities, direct cities, direct city staff to.
Okay, so direct city staff to come back with a proposed plan for how we would fund and expedite implementation of speed tables on Coming Street.
Yeah, in the current paves, paving season.
In the current paving season.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a couple of people we want to hear from. Mr. Whitaker first, then Sierra Lowell.
Just wanted to thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
First, the point of process, the front doors are locked and there's no sign saying if you want to join city council meeting. It wasn't locked when I got in, came in the front door, but they've been locked when I went out to get a clock. So I think you're in open meeting violation. I think we need to consider the impacts on snow plowing. I, I'm fully supportive of safety and the, and the predicament that these residents and safety and children create. But I, I feel like this planning window, seven years now, I feel like it's the way we put in public bathrooms too. It's pathetic. I think you, if you're planning to pave the street, you could pave the street without committing the $20,000 to the speed tables, which might create plowing hazards, and we don't know where to put them exactly. We could try some other removable obstacles, like Lauren mentioned, calming strategies this year. And we're possibly know more on where and whether to put the speed tables in next year. But the idea that snowplows are going to rip these things up is a concern. I also think we ought to, these are behavioral issues for a certain small subset of the population. And it's the same folks that are speeding up and down Main Street, you know? And the pretext that we arrest a legislator for a loud muffler or stop a legislator for a loud muffler? You know, we should be stopping people who are racing up and down Main Street and rolling coal, I think it's called, where you push out as much diesel smoke as you can. So I would like to see an emphasis on enforcement. I think we should experiment with some speed cameras, if possible, to find out who are these, it's probably only a handful of people who are terrorizing this street, you know? And those could be lessons learned that would apply in other problem areas. I think if you turn up your enforcement, we may not waste lots of $10,000 bills. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
The other thing is that you let somebody spark for way beyond three minutes earlier on the video, and I take protest at the disparate treatment.
Thank you, Steve. Sierra Lowell, are you still asking to be recognized?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for jumping in there. I thought we were at the motion. I just want to point out, in the process that has been proposed and accepted for traffic calming, the holdup here has been the fact that Coming Street has, the funds for paving in Montpelier has been delayed fiscal year after fiscal year. And the way the process is set up, the workflow chart, would, do, could we can consider, or is it necessary that the data be collected on a paved street? That, you know, the, the workflow chart is based on a municipality street already being paved. We're not in that situation. And we're trying to be efficient and move forward with installing a traffic calming solution. And we're bringing it to the attention of the city council, which my understanding is after the process, it is up to city council to approve this final. It's not up to the transportation, the Department of Public Works, which potentially that's where it was previous to that, to this workflow chart. I do want to bring up the most recent incident, which demonstrates, again, how narrow of a street. Again, a truck coming over the bridge and going around the 90-degree turn was attempting to drift and within 40 feet of the 90-degree turn, fishtailed and accelerated to such high speeds that when they crashed into the telephone pole, which is at the end of my driveway at my front yard, where my child and my dog and myself, often frequent, splintered the telephone pole in half and was only suspended, it didn't fall over because it was being suspended by a wire. These are the speeds that we're talking about. Now, it has also been pointed out that we need more enforcement, presence of enforcement. The Montpelier Police Department, they are not babysitters. They are quick to respond to telephone calls and they have done their due diligence and put in the monitoring systems to collect the data, one, over the bridge, and then again on the speed straightaway. So you actually have some comparable data because the bridge and the first portion of the street is paved versus non-paved. So I'm asking the city council to consider and, and if they will consider bypassing the process because the street is not paved, if, if this had been considered previously and, and maybe there needs to be a separate process for unpaved streets, where we, where we would be in the process right now is the Department of Public Works would have already initiated the surveys to all of the residents. And we'd now be discussing whether or not to install these. But because of the delay in the budget from fiscal year to fiscal year about just paving, we haven't been able to move forward in the process. And I think that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Sierra. Carrie.
Thanks, I wanted to speak to the motion. I think it's pretty clear that there's a problem that needs to be solved here. And I'm, I think it's a great idea to try to come up with an expedited, expedited process for doing so. I don't want us to bypass any of the key elements of the process, however. So I, I will vote for this motion, but with the understanding that all the pieces still need to happen, including the public, the public input. I think, I think that's a, that's absolutely essential. We can't just skip over that. Same with the data collection. And that could, we've got a lot of data already. I think that, you know, DPW could factor all in everything that we've heard already and what we already know, that doesn't have to start from scratch. But so I just wanted to make, make it clear that I do think the process that we have outlined is a very, very good process. And I would like to follow it as closely as possible. But if there's a way to do it quickly within this budget year, I'm all for it. And I would love to see a plan from DPW about how to do that.
Thanks, Carrie. Kurt?
Yes, thank you. So I have a suggestion for consideration by council. So, you know, we, Corey and I do believe that the traffic patterns, the speed at which people are going to be traveling on the road is going to change likely significantly once the road is paved, right? And it's smooth, and we see that on any street we pave. And so the design of the permanent measures will be different from that, from data collected post-pavement versus the current condition or even the condition of the pavement before we removed it and turned it to gravel. So my suggestion is that we purchase, DPW purchase, and install temporary speed bumps for this summer, removable. And we kind of, we manage traffic calming post-pavement. So paving bids are already out. And if we're gonna add this into the contract, it'd be by change order. So it would not be part of the bid. So I would suggest that we put in temporary speed bumps removable for the summer. And then this winter, we collect traffic data and develop a plan for permanent measures. That's my suggestion to council.
Thanks, Kurt. Lauren.
I, I consider Kurt's idea a friendly amendment. So I would, can I amend my proposal or what should we do?
The clerk and I were just discussing the fact that there's no such thing as a friendly amendment under our rules.
I love that phrase though.
Yes, but you can move to amend your, your motion.
I move to amend my motion to direct city staff to install temporary traffic calming measures this summer and then go through the long-term practice for a permanent solution on Coming Street.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion of that motion? Is this a motion to amend the, the base motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're to the main motion, which is the motion as you've just amended it. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Excuse me, yes, very briefly.
Can Kurt speak to how a temporary speed bump compares to a permanent one in terms of the height and effectiveness of the two?
Kurt, do you have an answer?
Well, Corey is more the expert this than I am. But, you know, the, generally the temporary speed bumps are more of a drastic, you know, bump. So they're probably gonna be more impactful for speeders than a permanent speed table. But, you know, I think they, they both sort of have the same, same effect. It's just a shorter distance with a bigger jolt on the temporary measures as opposed to, you know, a kind of a longer drawn out sort of impact to, to vehicles.
Thanks, Kurt. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify.
You please state the motion, just to be clear.
I have moved to amend the motion to, oh, this is already done. So the motion is now to direct city staff to install temporary traffic calming measures this summer and then go through the long-term process to find a permanent solution.
Thanks.
All right, are you ready for that vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. We have adopted, passed the motion. Thanks, folks. And it is now 8:38. It is time for our 10-minute 8:30 break. We'll be back here at approximately 8:48. All right, it'll call us back to order. And we are, next up have Montpelier Live update with our esteemed Director of Montpelier Live.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I know how to use a mic. So I'm gonna try to keep this brief, a little fun, some nice pictures.
Um, so I'm going to try to keep this brief, a little fun, some nice pictures, but also um just help council understand what some of our upcoming projects are. Um, and also talk a little bit about the DID fund. Um, I've only done this a couple of times, still new in the seat, but hopefully um this information will be helpful to all of you. So the first half is a little update on.
Let me just.
Yep.
Could you start out by telling everybody who you are?
Yes. Uh, I'm Katie Trout, the executive director of Montpelier Alive. I came on February twenty twenty-three and um, but I've been with the organization for a couple of years prior uh as the event coordinator. Um, so this first half I was saying is going to be a little bit of just an overview and an update. And the second half will be the DID um proposal. The arrows are not working. Okay, there we go. All right, this is downtown. I just want you to take note of uh how full the downtown looks. This is a downtown Taste of Montpelier Festival, I believe. Uh, this shot was taken. Um, but you know, people are talking about the health of the downtown and I just wanted to know what it looks like on a really good day. And we hope to see many of those this summer. You know all about Montpelier Alive, I'm sure, but I will just um speak a little bit about what some of our focuses are. Um, Montpelier Alive focuses on uh events and uh bringing vibrancy to our downtown. Um, we host ten-plus events annually. Um, also through our downtown event grant program, which we'll talk about later. And um right now we're prepping for our annual July third event. Uh, we did some research on this and we know that it attracts around nineteen thousand visitors each year. Um, and this year, coming right up, we have a wonderful webpage that shows the schedule of events. Please check that out. It's right around the corner. Um, Taste of Montpelier in September, Moonlight Magic, Flannel Friday and Mayfest are kind of our staple events. Uh, but we often will experiment with other events throughout the year. Uh, we work on downtown beautification efforts. Um, and uh that comes in the shape of flower baskets across town and barrels with the wonderful help of Lynn Seets, who has been a Montpelier Live volunteer for a very long time. Just want to take the opportunity to thank her for her hard work. Um, holiday decorations, many of those were washed away in the flood, but we had um wreaths and the glowing snowflakes uh across the, across the uh, the street. Um, we're focusing more on illumination these coming years, but definitely uh the garlands and, and all of that. That's Montpelier Life's work. Um, and public art, such as those colorful M benches that you might have seen uh down on the Rialto um and many murals across town. We just like to bring a little splash of color, um making our downtown more attractive. Um, we work in marketing, as you know. Um, our latest project was the adventure website uh that was branding our city as uh an all-around adventure location where you could access the great outdoors from our downtown and then back to downtown for, you know, dinner or a drink after a long mountain bike ride. Um, so we'll talk more about that adventure site, but we also do brochures for Montpelier and we take calls from visitors. Um, and our website is a main resource for tourism and visitors to Montpelier. Economic vitality uh supporting businesses and we all know what that looks like. Um, in addition to providing professional development opportunities and trying to fill empty storefronts and vacancies across town, we um help in uh times of need and crisis. Uh, both COVID and, and the flood were opportunities for us to step in and, and support our economic vitality downtown. We helped businesses reopen safely and confidently. Um, we granted over two million dollars to over a hundred and twenty-five businesses in downtown Montpelier, um providing resources for all. Um, these were impactful projects of the last year. Um, I was speaking about the all adventure, all-around adventure website, which you should check out if you haven't already. Adventure dot Montpelieralive.com, although you can get there from our website when you click on outdoor rec. Um, we are uplifting this site. I'll talk a little bit more about that. But um we know that there's a lot of potential here for uh being an economic driver for our downtown to focus on this access to the outdoors and outdoor rec. Um, and we're working with the City Parks Department on some of those activities, those branding activities. Another impactful project that we were kind of surprised to see the outcomes um and the positivity um and uh, and the great impact of is the illumination projects that we started working on last year. This is a picture of the Langdon Street Bridge, um which during a time when Langdon Street uh was basically under construction still from flooding and businesses felt like it was very hard to attract people there. Um, and it was the darkest time of year. The street felt a little unsafe and dirty. Uh, we lit up this bridge and all the businesses on that road will attest to the fact that it did in fact bring people uh to their area. It made everybody feel happier and um was a main attraction when people came to visit the city. That you could notice it from both sides on the north branch. Um, so this was kind of a pilot project for something we have in mind for the future. Um, you probably are very aware of uh what we worked on during flood, the flood and our recovery and resilience efforts, but here's a very quick overview. Um, we are a participant in developing the volunteer hub with the City Parks Director, Alec Ellsworth, Peter Walk. And um, of course, I want to acknowledge Fire Department, Bob Gowan's, um MPD, DPW, City Management, City Council, everybody did what they could here. Um, and the volunteer hub was a pretty extraordinary um thing that we all, we all contributed to. Uh, we also provided resources for businesses and community um on a webpage that became the go-to place for people to find what they needed and links to more information. Um, fundraising and granting, I spoke about that uh raising over two point six million dollars and made a hundred and fifty grants um to recovering businesses to get them back on their feet. Uh, and we did the last grant round for that in January of twenty twenty-four, actually. That was a third grant round. Trying to fill those gaps when the businesses needed it the most. And resilience, we continue to stay engaged um with the Commission for Recovery and Resilience. I, Montpelier Alive, myself, um are a partner and uh I attend the meetings uh each time and I work closely with John Copans to discuss some of the issues that our downtown faces and think of um creative solutions uh and hopefully acting as a, a voice to share the thoughts and feelings and opinions of the downtown business community. I did want to share this with you as well. I will send it out over email. Um, but I thought that everybody would be interested in seeing these survey results that may inform some of our next work collectively together. Um, we did a business survey recently and over thirty businesses responded. Um, and here were some of the general thoughts. I will send you a much more detailed view of this. Um, but in summary, uh they thought Montpelier Life should continue doing all the things that we are doing. Um, and including more support uh and professional development opportunities, increasing that aspect of what we do. Um, downtown improvements that they recommended would be more investment in infrastructure. Um, more efforts to attract tourists, lower property taxes, better signage, uh cleaner streets, better parking. You hear from them, you know, you know, these things, but um it was just interesting to get some collective opinion about what could be improved in the downtown. Um, main challenges they uh commented on were the lack of foot traffic, uh costs of doing business and living in Montpelier. Aligned with some of the things that, that we know and, and have heard already. Um, but other comments, there are some businesses that feel a deep concern about their future in Montpelier, but the overall sense is that most businesses are dedicated to doing business in Montpelier. So that really does say something about their positive feelings about doing business here, that they want to continue that. And I think that's important to note. We did a consumer survey. Over two hundred community members responded. I, I think this is a pretty good rate for the survey only being out there for just over a week. Um, we still have the survey open. We're going to continue to do surveys, but this one brought back some interesting notes as well. Reasons for coming downtown, um consumers come downtown for shopping, dining and events. Fifty-five percent responded that they like to recreate downtown. That's what draws them downtown. And I thought that was interesting. What does that mean? Well, maybe Onion River Outdoors, some of their events that are centered there. I think there are a lot of community members that participate in those. Top things consumers love about Montpelier, walkability, accessibility, friendliness. We are a welcoming place, I promise. Um, local shops and restaurants. Challenges, these are important to note. Um, almost fifty percent of people are not sa- said that they are not deterred from coming downtown. They'll come anyway, but um many others said inconsistent open hours for shops and restaurants, lack of parking, poor infrastructure. A lot of coming, a lot of um comments coming back to infrastructure. I can't see what's behind here. Oh. That's okay. Oh. Yeah. Oh, yes, okay. Let's see what's behind there. Reveal. Oh, yeah. No, that's okay. Um, oh, other comments and deterrents. You could see at the very bottom drug use and safety. So that also hit part of this top list. These are, these are, this is a report I created of the top things that collectively the people in our community spoke about. Um, let's see here, one more page of this. A couple of other things, um, public improvements were a priority. More business variety, more green space, more parking. And experiences, uh people would like to see more live music, a maker space, art classes, a climbing wall or gym downtown. A number of people commented on that. Some people think it's important to have a safe space for teens. One idea that came up is a barcade. There's a lot of fun um data that was gathered from the survey. Again, I'll share that in more depth at another time. Strategic planning projects, we won't go in depth here, but I did want to orient you to how we do our business as Montpelier Alive. We focus on these four points that Main Street America encourages downtown organizations like ours to focus on. And it helps give a better map for doing our work going forward. We focus on our own organization and sustainability, design, beautification, economic vitality, marketing and tourism. So we will continue doing these things. But I wanted to point out our upcoming new projects. You may have heard murmurs about some of these. By the way, this bridge is not in Montpelier, but I wanted to highlight how extraordinary um some of the illumination projects can be in other places that we admire, like Montreal and Quebec. And this is the Champlain Bridge that goes to Montreal or to that region. Um, new projects include, I have been working really hard um on getting a welcome center downtown. And I have great news that we've located three potential spots with the state uh for that to go in on a temporary basis. So near term, um with willingness from the property owners and the state to work on that project together. I will keep you informed. Um, and it's been a really exciting, quick turn of events. Um, advertising campaigns, we're focusing more on Chittenden County, knowing that Burlington shoppers want to shop in Montpelier more these days. So trying to get us on um that map a little more and greater reach to Montreal and Boston with ad campaigns. And this is new. We're looking into what it would cost to have a Burlington Airport ad in the Burlington Airport. We noticed we've got Stowe, um, we've got a couple of other cities, towns in Vermont, but we don't have the capital advertised at the Burlington Airport. So um we are working on securing funding for that project and it's looking really hopeful. And we have a meeting this week to discuss with the airport what that looks like, even just for a year, trying, trying this out. Um, and you may have heard, we've recently, Montpelier Alive received a grant from the state of Vermont um called the Grow Grant. Uh, and it's a version of the Think VT relocation program, which used to be the incentive program where the state would pay people to move to Vermont. They've transformed that into finding partners who can help work with them um on marketing to attract people to, for us, the capital region. Um, and conduct outreach to new Montpelierites, new people who settle in this region where Montpelier is a hub um to help retain them. So instead of using funding and money for that, they're relying on partners to come up with programs that can support that. And it's the kind of growth that we really hope to see here. I'm not ignoring the fact that housing is an issue when I talk to, now we're calling them clients or people who want to move here. I tell them about the development project. So I say, you're not going to find a place tomorrow, but you might find a place in a few years. This is what's happening here. So it's also a great way to um kind of get some of those projects out there and the potential that Montpelier has to, to grow. Um, so that will boost our marketing efforts. That's really the main idea here. We're very excited to have that funding for Montpelier. Um, bridge illumination. So this is the other big project that we're working on. This sounded like a small idea, but we saw with the Langdon Street project that it was really impactful. And um with the help of Vivian Tomasi, who is our project coordinator for that, um, we have raised over a hundred thousand dollars to light the seven bridges in our downtown. Four on the Winuski, three on the North Branch River. That's a seasonal lighting project. We're going to see how it goes this winter. We think that this could be really exciting for putting Montpelier on the map as a destination. Um, these bridge lights can be colored, they can be white, they can be anything we want them to be. And we're working really closely with a company to find the right look and feel for our town and it's all changeable. So that's what we're doing this winter. We are thinking about, and we may have the opportunity to move that into a more permanent realm. And we've been engaging with the city on our seasonal lighting thus far. And we really look forward to engaging with all the council members to talk about what that permanent lighting would look like. Doesn't mean the lights are on all the time. It means we could have light during events. You know, July, we'd have red, white and blue on the Winuski River, some of the Truss Bridges. Um, just imagine that Montpelier could become the city of bridges and it would really set us apart from any other place in the state. And um for people outside of the state, it would put Montpelier on the map. I think this could be really transformational and we will certainly keep you updated as that evolves. And you will see the bridges lit up this winter because we achieved our goal to do that on a seasonal basis. Um, with all of that said, this is an outline of how we use our funding or what the funding was um in the previous year and what it will be looking like going forward. This is DID funding. Montpelier Alive has a number of revenue streams. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit. But this funding is the um pilot and the local tax funding. That total is the sixty thousand ninety-one. That has been the same for three or four years at the least. That's the data I have from when I entered this position. Last year for marketing, we spent thirty thousand five hundred. This year, I'm looking at twenty-nine five hundred. We have a lot of marketing support from these grants that we have received. Um, but I want to focus that for the DID on a broader reach to Boston, Quebec. This is ad campaigns and media, media partners. And the And the website redesign for better navigation for visitors. And we're putting our website in French, um, not just in French, but having the option, having the option of, um, of it being in French language, which I think will be really beneficial for attracting Quebecers. So the marketing comes down just a little bit. And then for beautification in twenty, uh, in the last year, uh, it was twenty-four, twenty-four thousand five hundred. And for this upcoming, we propose twenty-five, five hundred. And this would go towards some of these projects. I outlined the bridge illumination and other holiday decor to expand our garlands, um, across to the Bailey Bridge, um, Bailey Ave Bridge and the lighting there. And also expanding our flowers and planting. This year we were able to do Main Street. And I think that's been a really nice welcoming, um, a, a way to welcome visitors into our town through the gateway on Main Street. Um, and other streetscape improvements I'll outline in a minute. And then our grants, we want the same from, from last year to this year, it's five thousand. And then we supplement that from Montpelier Alive with another five thousand to support at least ten events, um, through our downtown event grant program. So not just our events, but other people who want to do events, uh, we always support through these grants. This is historically how the DID has worked. I haven't changed very much. I just, um, adjusted the numbers a little bit according to the projects that we foresee. You don't have to look at all these numbers, just on the far right, you'll see this, this is the proposal for fiscal year twenty, twenty-five. And I put in red those areas of extra focus and moving the funds from one thing to the next. Every year it looks just slightly different in these columns, but they add up to the same sixty thousand ninety-one. So it's just moving the money around a little bit. There's the broader reach, the French language option and navigation upgrades for our website. And then streetscape, um, holidays, flowers. And the streetscape and public art can mean a number of things. Benches, trash bins, art, I really like to fuse the two. Meet the community need with an artistic project. So, um, those are our DID numbers. And lastly, of course, I want to thank the council for your ongoing support. Um, I am loving this job. I'm loving this partnership with the city and I think it's only gotten stronger after the flood. Um, finding ways to work together and, and meet that community need. I have a few, um, things I'd love for the council to consider going forward, whether it's this year or next year. Um, but generally I noticed that, uh, and this is not for a vote, this is just for your considerations. Um, an increase in the budget line to accommodate rising costs. And we obtain a money, funds from, um, in the budget every year outside of the DID. But I just want it to be noted that that also hasn't changed in a number of years. But our costs are rising to do events, to do everything we do, um, just like every other budget line. So we can come up with a plan for that. I would love to have council, have the city continue to invest in infrastructure and street state scape improvements. Um, and continue to investment, marketing and tourism and our events. Investing in regional and local flood mitigation projects. And continue to partner, um, on economic development projects in all the ways that Montpelier Alive can using our strengths. Thank you for listening to the presentation and, um, for again, your support, uh, for all that we've been doing this year.
Thanks Katie. I just make a procedural comment before we, so just all you all know, the Downtown Improvement District, the DID fund is a tax surcharge on commercial buildings in the designated downtown. So it's voted on by the voters every year. And so, and because it's a higher rate and the state buildings are in, it increases their pilot payment toward this as well. So that's what the, the total is here. But because it's a tax revenue that we collect and pass, you have to appropriate the money. So we don't, we, they set their own budget, they do anything, but this one piece, you have to approve expenditure of the DID. So it would be appropriate when you get to it to make a motion in a second and vote to approve the budget.
And that is the next item on the agenda, so we, we know everything. Yep, we, I think we know everything we need to know to take that up at this point. Any, Lauren, I think you were raising your hand.
First of all, thank you. You do so much to make our community better, super grateful and exciting to see the new projects and everything coming. Um, and one thought, we've already given an assignment earlier tonight, but I wonder about at some point if the city's new grant committee could be an asset for you. I mean, you do so much with, uh, not that much staff. So, uh, maybe we could tap into some community resources to help also be looking at, you know, the, the city investment. And then also other ways that we could help with grant writing potentially also. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and yeah, just thank you. And I mean, I'm happy to just make a motion that we adopt the, um, DID proposal as offered by Montpelier Alive.
Well, I suggest we hold that just because we're not at that, that item on the agenda. We can do it quickly. Any, any other comments or questions from the council about, uh, the Montpelier Alive presentation? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Steve. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, before you, Palin's got her hand up, we'll take her first.
Thank you, uh, thank you for this presentation and I am the, uh, council representative in the Montpelier Alive Board and I also want to thank them. Uh, they are all volunteer and they are really doing great job, uh, to support, um, all the efforts we are doing as a city. So I have heard a couple, uh, questions from different people. If Montpelier Alive can create some kind of platform for people who are looking for a job at downtown and the businesses who are looking for employees. Is there any plan or is it possible to do? Thank you.
Shall I just answer?
Yeah.
I love that question because I can say yes. That is a part of this Grow Grant is housing a section of our website that can address the needs of new residents. And a part of that will be a jobs board. Um, and we are working with other, uh, employers, uh, to partner on various projects that can all be a part of this webpage. And I think, I think that's kind of what you're talking about.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that's, is that all you had, Palin? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve Whitaker. I noticed on the priorities, the survey priorities, uh, that Katie skipped over, uh, restrooms. I noticed public restrooms on that list and it didn't get a mention. Um, but I've mentioned earlier wifi. I, we have hikers, we have bikers that come and they buy burgers and beer, but they would sure love to shower before they go out to our restaurants and probably the other restaurant patrons would like that too. So I just think that if we had a toilets committee and a homelessness task force for five years and not accomplished any of that, I would like to see Montpelier Alive have more latitude and direction and support, including financial support to get this job done. These restrooms are not just for the unhoused, these restrooms are for our citizens, our mothers with children, our old people and incontinent people, et cetera. And we're just really missing the boat to have, you know, ripped down every shelter and info booth that the homeless use and, and still not even put in restrooms. So I, I think that this is an opportunity to, uh, both do, do right by the business community and do right by the citizens, including the unhoused citizens. And I would encourage you to, uh, I, I am curious, who paid, was that you, Montpelier Alive money that paid for that expensive new electric service on the Langdon Street Bridge? And the Main Street Bridge? Those are, are, are we also investing city funds in putting electrical? Cause there's a whole bunch of new electrical and meter sockets and stuff. And I was an electrician, so I know what that stuff costs. So I'm surprised you're getting a good deal on it if the prices you're quoting.
We've been working closely with the city on the infrastructure, uh, improvements to be able to do the bridge lighting projects. Uh, so it's been, it's been both. Supporting Montpelier Alive and, and the city supporting the infrastructure upgrades.
So did we have a line item that we voted the city money to be spent on that?
Montpelier Alive raised the money for that.
Okay, alright, so that's, I just don't want to, uh, I don't want money hidden in the budget. I like, I like things transparent, so thanks.
Thanks Katie. Uh, Katie, I think we'll move to the next agenda item, um, which is the Downtown Improvement District Budget. Now, you want to make your motion?
Um, I move we adopt the Downtown Improvement District Budget as proposed.
Is there a second? Second. We, we still have Katie here, so if there are any questions about that, we can ask her. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Great.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much Katie for coming in. Alright, next up we have the item, uh, Councilor Coen's proposal for a youth committee. Uh, Palin, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so it was very good to hear a couple of times that different, uh, people during their, um, talk or presentation mentioned about youth and, uh, how their ideas are important, even like, uh, Montpelier Alive, uh, presentation. I heard that youth wanted to have something for them, uh, downtown. So, uh, I think it's a good coincidence that we are talking about, uh, creation of youth committee. So, uh, we most of the time talk about day-to-day, uh, initiatives, but also most of the things we approve related with our city's future. And youth is our future. So that's why, um, I want to propose to create a youth committee as one of the city comedies. Uh, but this committee will have, uh, all members from middle school and high school students. And they will, um, give insights on, uh, city projects. And they will also talk about their vision, what they want to see i- in our, uh, town. Um, so youth still can serve in different city comedies. Uh, but this committee will be, uh, helping them to be part of the decision-making process. And by this way, uh, we can create more inclusive local governance. And, uh, if, uh, we have this youth committee, all the members, uh, who will be experienced in local governments, they can also, um, educate their peers. And also maybe in the future, they might be interested in running, uh, for the seats. Um, so I think it's a brief summary and all the details, um, are, um, you know, listed uh, in the proposal, so I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Thanks Palin. How could we say no? Any, anything from the council?
I think it merits bringing it back to Palin earlier. So this committee, the initial setup is that they wouldn't require staff support. At least that's my understanding of the way this would be set up. So, um, it just is, is a, I think Palin will be involved in, I guess, maybe possibly in other council members, what she's seeking to do it. But, um, cause I, you know, staff, there's a lot, we're asking a lot of staff. And I think if she's able to set this up and, and not add an additional burden, at least this year, that would be good.
Thanks too. I think, I think it's a valid question. I think there are certain things, administrative things that have to be done that probably will involve some staff support. Posting, uh, the, uh, agendas, uh, posting minutes. But it doesn't have to be that much.
Yeah, cause we have close to thirty committees right now. This will, this and the grants committee puts us up to like thirty-two. So I think it's something to be mindful of as we look at our structure.
Yep. Bill, did you have any thoughts about, okay?
No, I, I had talked with Palin about this as well and we, you know, same thing that we didn't really have staff other than the postings and, you know, the, those kinds of things that we could devote to that, you know, see how this evolves over the future. I did volunteer that staff members may be interested or willing to meet with this committee. Like I know I would go and sort of describe how different forms of local government and just how it works and how ours works and the structure. And, you know, police chief might go and talk to them about what the police department does and give them a tour or, you know, different people might be willing to do that. But as far as an ongoing staff person, we can't really devote that right now. We are pretty, pretty much at max.
I would happily go talk about what we do here at the, at the council. I think there'd be a lot of support.
So the mayor will be the staff person, that's what I heard.
Lauren.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is great. Hopefully there's interest from enough youth to do it. My two thoughts would be, um, one, if we're pursuing it, trying to get really crystal clear on what the goals and outcomes that we're looking for. The city committees that I've been on that have struggled the most have had kind of either like really big or really vague missions. Like the Social and Economic Justice Committee, it was like so broad, like, um, that we spent a lot of time talking about like, what, what's our purview? And what should we be doing? And so just to try to make it a really targeted, you know, maybe there's even some specific projects like, uh, youth center or like something tangible and then also providing input or something. But like, I would just recommend that we try to give them a really actionable mission and goals, um, and timelines. The other piece that's kind of tied to that is I've, um, for example, worked with a number of youth who are appointed to like the, the state's climate council as the youth representative. And they have expressed frustration and challenges if they feel like they're spending a lot of time, but don't actually really have a voice. And there's not really an outcome that they see. So again, just to the point of like, if they're developing something that is coming to us, that we can act on. And so that it feels like an empowering process that they leave feeling really good and not just like something they spin their wheels or they write some report that we, you know, say thank you and put on a shelf or something. So just, just trying to be really thoughtful about how we structure it so it can actually be successful and a good, great experience for the kids would be my thoughts.
Okay. So Lauren, just following up on that, are you thinking that we would want to do more work on this before we move and approve the proposal that is in our agenda tonight?
Well, it looks like the proposal was to kind of come back with a, working with staff over the summer to develop a structure. And I know there's kind of some goals laid out. But it says to, to kind of just develop the mission over the summer. So I don't know that, you know, maybe it could even be like a consent agenda thing, you know, and then we could like pull it off if it feels like it's, if the staff and Palin working together or whatever, if it feels like it needs the more work. But I would be fine with something like that. I, I just was making a suggestion about how that gets developed more than anything else. So I mean, I'd be fine approving. I mean, I want to let Palin move it or whatever, but.
Palin.
Yeah, thank you Lauren, it's a good point. Uh, that's why, you know, I've heard this recommendation from, um, several people. Uh, so I put that timeline and working with the city staff. Uh, and before, you know, announcing and trying to attract youth, we will have a very, um, clear structure. Yeah, it's a good point.
Carrie. Oh, took your hand down. Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve this or do we want to just say, okay, start working on this and come back to us with something concrete? Carrie. Oh, you're still muted.
Sorry, okay, um, I'm, I move that we direct the city staff to come up with a plan for creating this committee. Including a very Including a very clear, um, purpose and goals.
Is there a second?
Was that, was that in conjunction with Councilmember Cohen?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Moved by, uh, Carrie, seconded by.
Can I say something?
Uh, Palin, yes.
Uh, so, um, again, it is in the plan to work with city staff to create some structure, but it is important youth should also have a say in that structure too. So when we talk about clear structure, I think it will be clear enough to create a framework, uh, but please, you know, um, be aware that, um, this committee's members can, you know, change or might want to see something else. So I hope it is okay with the council members, okay?
Yeah, I heard Lauren seconded. Yeah. Yeah, Palin, I agree with that. Anybody else ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright. Next step down the road for this. Thanks Palin.
Thank you.
We're now up to item twelve, district heat budget and rates. And we have our exploding finance director here.
Before Evelyn pulls it up, it's the same presentation that's in your packet. I'm happy to give it to you. I can also give you a quick Cliff Notes version without it. Um, it is the same budget as last year. There is no increase in the rates. They are the exact same rates and the exact same capacity charges as the prior year. Uh, we were unable to do a capacity study this year, so there was no way to reallocate. We are working, um, really diligently to get the fiber system back up and functioning so that we can collect that data in the FY twenty-five heating system, uh, excuse me, season and reallocate for twenty-six. Um, that's the Cliff Notes version. I can walk through the whole presentation, very similar to last year's, um, and not a lot straying from the packet. Uh, and I can also read you the last slide that has the recommended action if that would be helpful.
Well, let me, um, I, I just, I, I, I really appreciate the Cliff Notes version of this. Um, one of the thoughts I have is that, uh, you're you're confident that without any increases, you know, the budget that we have now is sufficient to, uh, to meet the needs.
Yeah, so we reviewed the budget thoroughly. Um, I've adjusted it based on the agreement from the state and any other needs we have, and we felt that we could do that within the budget structure, um, with no increase, aside from the fact that there's the accounting discrepancy with depreciation and this fund is always operating at an accounting loss.
Okay, anybody, any members of the council have any comments or questions? Uh, including delving as, as deeply or as not as, as you need to?
Rates for two thousand twenty-five?
Do you want me to read them, or are you?
Yeah.
It's, it's on the thing.
Is that, oh, here it is, okay, sorry. So you want me to just read it from the, what you were?
Yeah.
Okay, recommended action is to approve the district heat Montpelier budget in the amount of six hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and establish a district heat capacity rate of six dollars and ninety cents per MBTH, and the energy rate of fifteen sixty-five per MMVTH, um, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second? Second? Is there any discussion? Looks like you.
I would just say that experience has taught me to trust Sarah's accounting um, on all of this, and I appreciate the Cliff Notes version as well.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks Sarah. Didn't know you were gonna have such an easy night, did you? I am looking at the time now. It is nine thirty-five, um. The thing that I really want to make sure we, uh, complete is to ju- adopt the strategic plan. So I'm going to suggest we move that up, um, and then see if we still have time for some of the other, uh, action items. So, Kelly, is that you?
Well, she's coming up, I just say that, uh, we had talked about doing this in workshop session, but we have two remote people, so I don't know how. Well, but I think the intent was to open it up, have public comment and have the council have a discussion, uh, if you still want to do it that way.
Well, I, I do want to have as, uh, free-flowing a discussion as we can, so, um, so I think I will start by, uh, opening up for, opening this up for public comment, either in the room or on Zoom, and, and then go from there to uh, discussion within the council. Um, I am not seeing any hands raised. So, take it away Kelly.
Alright, so I do not have a presentation, um, prepared for you tonight. We've gone through all of the goals and initiatives, um, over the last several meetings. Um, what I did send along, um, was in summary form, um, the detail, and you do have it in the packet from a few meetings ago. Um, it is a little bit small, you can blow it up, um, but in that, um, summary, we did include a level of effort, um, as well as a status and timeline for each of the items. Um, and so I trust that you received that. I'm happy to go into detail there. Um, additionally, I did include some key performance indicators for each of the goals, um, so this is just kind of a starting point, um, as we move through this next year. Um, the other thing that I do want to note is that, um, with the str- the strategic plan and the draft that we've got in front of you, um, we're moving to, um, go through twenty twenty-seven, um, and so we'll come back to you annually, um, to review the plan. Um, and then there are a few other minor changes, um, that we picked up as we went through the plan, and so I guess from there, I'd open it up to questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, if you could put it up on the screen, um, I know you said it's kind of hard to read because it's small, but
Yes, um.
It may take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, if you want to give me just a minute, I'll grab it.
Yeah.
Happy to do it.
I think you could probably find yours faster than I could find mine.
Yeah, you got it.
While you're doing that, let's talk about special meeting dates.
Okay, good idea. So, uh, jumping to that, we have two spec- two administrative items that you need to take care of. One is awarding, uh, the paving bids. Kurt was hoping to do that as soon as July one. They're out to bid now, and the sooner we can award the bids, the sooner the work can get done. And the second is setting the tax rate, uh, which again is, uh, you know, a mathematical function, but once we have all the final grant list information, we'll send it out, and we've often done it this way with, uh, 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 remote meeting, um. So that would be the second one, is I think yours. Okay, well, I think she was hoping for July nine for that. Um, there may be a third topic I'm going to talk about under my city meeting schedule, but, uh, so I think those would be the dates. We have done those sometimes at noon, but like four, you know, five o'clock, if that's better for people, it doesn't take long.
Okay, do you have your calendars out? Do you have a July first, does that work for people? And Monday, it's a Monday. Right, and we have our regular meeting.
Seventeenth.
I, I mean, you and I
Oh, yeah.
Have a regular meeting at, at four on Mon- on Monday, so we could, if we wanted to do it here on the first.
Oh, okay. But I, I will zoom into it, but.
I'm literally on the road all day, Monday, driving.
So the paving bid one, well, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Should just be, here's the bids.
Yeah.
Here's the ways, here's, you know.
What about the second?
But we won't get the information until the actual meeting.
Aye. Now Kurt's still on.
Would we have it?
Or do you, if you're still on, uh, tuning in as we're talking about paving bids, when would they expect to get the information about the, the paving bids, if we're having a special meeting?
Hey, this is Kurt, um. Uh, I believe the paving bids are, um, are opening this Friday.
This Friday? But he, he. So that, so the council would have the, that bid information in advance of the first? They wouldn't just be getting it on the first?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
But you cannot. I, uh, I mean, if I can't make the actual meeting.
As long as we have four.
And you need my vote, yeah, you could contact me, I suppose, but otherwise, yeah. And I, but at least I'll have the data, yeah.
Why don't we set it for the, and is is noon preferable to people? Twelve o'clock and it, these, this tends to take like five minutes. Okay, let's do noon on the first. And maybe you'll be at a point where you can phone in, but maybe you don't, maybe you don't even, maybe you can be absent with the, uh, consent of the council and we don't even need you. And then the ninth is a Tuesday. That's funny, looks, looks like I'm potentially out that day, but, uh, oh, I see what I've got on that day. Yeah, I can I can do it. I suggest doing it, uh, kind of e- earlier in the day because I have an event I need to be at, like eight or nine. How does that look for people? Nine AM? Tim? Yeah. Is that, okay. Nine's better than the eight for, for folks? Given the time, I, I get it, we could do it at seven AM, but I realize most people are not wanting to do it at that hour. Nine o'clock on the ninth it is. Carrie and Palin, I'm sorry, I, I didn't specifically ask if those times are okay with you, so.
Yeah, I just said yes.
Okay, fine, yeah.
Great, thank you. Alright.
So, um, did you want to take a look at the summary sheet, or did you want to take a look at the plan at at, at the whole thing?
Let's start with the summary sheet.
Okay.
And then the, the overall plan.
Evelyn, can I share the screen? Okay. Trying to make this a little bit bigger, because this is a little, a little small. And I can't do that, so, let's see. I don't know that there is, Steve, I'm sorry.
And the answer is that we do not think there is a copy in the room.
Yeah, I don't know that the summary is really going to look that great up here, um, to be honest.
And Kelly, are you ready to share it?
Small. Um, I certainly can.
See a point.
Yeah, it's, it's really small. It's just the way that the formatting is on this. What I can do is pull it up using Excel version, um. See if that's a little bit easier to read. Yeah, it's just that the formatting, it's not that great, um, to look at this way. Um, so I'm going to just go with what we've got up here, I guess, um.
Is, is the, is the full one easier to look at because it, it wouldn't be in this format?
Yeah, so we, the way that it is online is it's in a PDF format, and so it's just, it's not the
Gotcha.
Format that I would normally view it in. Um, the Excel format is a little bit easier if you wanted to sort, and so that's why the, the Excel format is what I would prefer, um, but it's not really in a format that really offers or lends itself to presentation, um. Oh, yeah, I know, I've, yep. Doing that, um, but it's just not, and then this machine doesn't, is limited, um, so if you're you can get it as big as I can, but then as you can see, it cuts off. See what I'm saying? Here.
Okay, so what we have.
Yeah, I don't know that the summary is, but we can go with it. Um, so how did you want to take this? I mean, I, what we can do is we can go through each of the goals, we can go through the initiatives, we can go through the level of effort. I, I'm not sure where you want to start.
Well, I I would be happy with saying, we've gone through everything and it all makes sense to me as is our strategic plan, and, and but I know there may be other people who may have a different view of that, and so I'd like to hear what other people have to say, and maybe we could go like goal by goal. So our first goal is all under infrastructure. And we have a set of items.
Are you going to read them?
So, um, just to be clear, um, just for a suggestion, um, so we've, we've already, um, done the goals, we've done the strategy, and really we'd be looking at the initiatives and action items that are, are noted here. Um, just to, if, if you wanted to go through them, and I also do have physical copies of the, um, plan itself, and so that might be the easiest way to do this, is just to kind of look at the plan. These, all of these initiatives have been incorporated into it, and then in terms of looking at level of effort or timing, then we could look at the summary.
Okay.
Would that work?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that, okay.
You have physical copies for everybody?
I do.
Uh, great.
And then I also have copies of the, um, the performance measures too, just to go through those if you wanted to. I'm gonna just go ahead and stop my share. This just doesn't seem to be
It's
jiving, yeah.
Not readable.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah.
Or is it the same, is that, yeah?
Yes, Lauren.
Just, um, want to make sure that for Carrie and Want to make sure that for Carrie and Palin, is it clear what's documents, or do they have these, just so they know what we're all looking at together?
Thanks.
Okay, great.
So those are on the way to you, Carrie and Palin? Does that mean we have an extra one for Mr. Whitaker?
He is welcome to these, sure.
Thank you. Although this is a council work session, and we already. Requested public comment.
Yeah, but without having, how do you take comment if you don't have it to review? And this isn't what you believe in.
Oh, I don't think I got that.
Yes, all of this had been sent out for the last meeting because this was on last meeting's agenda, the whole thing, and of course you've seen every one of them.
Yep.
Every, every meeting since March. Or one at a time.
One at a time since March, yeah, so. A- and to remind us all, and anyone who's watching at home. We've been through a process since, uh, since the election of, uh. You know, dissecting and examining every. Element of our, uh, strategic plan, um. Item by item, and we decided that the way we proceed is take, uh. You know, discuss and, um. Take presentations on each of these items, and then from there, reserve the whole thing to the end of this process. To, uh, adopt. The strategic plan as a, as a whole, as a single document. And we have adopted all the goals.
Yes, that's correct.
Lauren.
I just emailed you all, um, this is like, sorry, wordsmithy that I should have sent before, but. Um, I just feel like, like the first thing people would see is our vision statement, and I feel like that first sentence doesn't read. Right, um, so I just proposed a very, like a non-substantive stylistic tweak, um, so it would read. Instead, Montpelier is an engaged and growing city with a population that ref- reflects cultural and economic diversity and security for all. And then I had also sent. I thought we had changed this in a previous year, but I guess not, like at the second to bottom value statement. Instead of saying climate change is real, um. The proposal is just, the city must work to actively address climate change through environmental sustainability and resiliency. Initiatives. Sorry, it's super wordsmithy.
Totally.
Like, if they would any day, it might just be those.
You could say it's super wordsmithy, or you could say it's careful and thoughtful. Do those, those changes work for people?
Those were the only ones I just sent around to, to start, just get some wordsmithing out of the way before getting to more substance.
I got some of that too, actually.
All right, well.
So on the.
Before, wait a minute, let me just ask, are people okay with the changes that Lauren sent? Okay. And. Carrie and Palin, are you? With us and okay on that? Thumbs up, great, thank you. So that's in, Tim.
Okay, um, and we've approved the goals, but. Wordsmithy has been bothering me for a bit, and I just, yeah, the rest of you feel, but this, the strategic plan goal for improved public health and safety for all. And then following that in parentheses, we have including the unhoused. And then, it, we also did the same thing. In another place later on, I guess the question is, is it really appropriate to single out a group when we're saying for all?
So you, you think it's just safe for all, period? Work for people?
So that would happen there, and.
And see thumbs up on, on the screen, I, I, I think that people wanted to put that in there because. They wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we consider our unhoused people to be members of the community who. We're serving them too, but, uh.
We did the same thing on goal five, on page ten of twelve, um, improve public health and safety for all, and then again said including the unhoused. So there's two places I stopped.
Great. Um, so I think those are also approved, approved. Everything, everyone's. Good with that? Okay. Adrian.
Just a mod. Kind of stop progress on the strategic plan, because it's been going on for a very, very long time, but. I think between now and twenty twenty-seven, I would love to see more of a strategic plan template. Um, I know Palin is an expert in this area as well as myself, this is what I do for a living. And having some smart goals which are measurable, achievable, um, really identifying baselines. And where we are now, where do we want to go, and how are we going to get there, is a strategic plan. And really basing it on some type of data, um, really data-driven decisions. And this is, you know, we've gone through this, it's a list of projects, but why these projects, why these projects now? And how are we gonna know that they're successful? And I think data is really, really, really important for a strategic plan, um, and just have very clear, smart goals. So that we know what we're doing, why we're doing it, when we're doing it, who's doing it, and how much does it cost?
So you're not saying we should throw this out to do this, this year, but what you're saying is that as we develop this into the future. We incorporate those ideas.
Can we please, yes, for the next few years, let's think about what that might look like.
Uh huh.
So, thank you for that consideration.
I think to follow that thought, because I, we talked about this at our retreat, I mean, this has been a topic for a while in the council, and I, I think one thing I find. I- i- the format, it, it just keeps coming out in the same format over and over, and it. It's a template that I think staffs worked with for a while and maybe are comfortable with, but it's, the council really, at least at our retreat. I don't think we're comfortable with it, it's not doing what we want it to do. So I think, you know, redo means not this form again, let's find a way to make it really work.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether I agree with the council in general isn't happy with the format, but I think it's, I think it's wide open. You know, we definitely. Can be structuring it in. Any number of ways. And. There's no point in having it structured that doesn't work for people.
I'm sure. Parts of this are useful to the staff, but, you know, things like infrastructure is, are we ever going to have a strategic plan that doesn't include infrastructure? No, so. And there are a number of things that happen every year, like implement water line replacement. Plan and, and all of the subheads of that. And yes, you have to keep track of that, but. If they were. Grouped together to the side or blanked out or something, it would, would make everything so much more manageable. You know what I mean, there'd be less to look at, and there's all this stuff that we're, we're gonna do every year, and we know it's there, we need to be reminded that it's there. But we don't need to, we don't need to see it, we don't need to print it out. Um, I mean, it's a small thing, but.
Well, I don't think it's a small thing, I think it's a, it's an interesting point that you raise, because, and we. We talked about this, we sort of talked about this at the, uh, at the retreat, and, and since then. Which, uh, which is that there are certain activities of city government that are just. Basic services that we have to do, and does that mean it has to be in the strategic plan? Or. Another way of putting it, as we talked about the strategic plan, sometimes it's. What are the topics that we want to spend our time at the council level? To work on or not, and there's some things that we didn't put in the strategic plan because. It's just. Funk, basic functions of government.
Yeah.
And just specifically to that, that very specific example about the water line, you know, that was a very high policy priority. You know, we, you have now since adopted the ten-year plan, but you know, last year, having that plan, figuring out a way to fund it. And now, you know, our pursuit of funding, you know, grant money for that is. Still extremely high priority, so it's, it's, you know, I mean, fixing water lines is kind of something we do, but that big dealing with. Backlog of, of waterline was, it had been identified as a real high infrastructure goal. So I think, you know, now we've adopted it, so it's kind of like, still make sure that's at the head of the chest, now we gotta do it, you know, you said.
Well, yeah. Yeah, sure, and, and, and we, we can't ignore it, and, and maybe we attach some.
And at some point that maybe goes into the work.
Yeah.
Roads are the same way, you know, we, we, uh. This year, earlier this year, and every year, we, the Department of Public Works is gonna come to us, not just saying, we're gonna pave roads, but. Here are the roads we're gonna do. And we, we approve that. Adrian.
I'll just give some, you know, kind of building off that, like, you know, some of our goals and our strategies are increase available housing units, so. The question in my mind was, well, how many housing units? Are currently available, what are the opportunities to increase housing units, and then what would be the annual goal for the city to? Try to strive towards reaching, you know, are we trying to increase those? Annual or available housing units by? Ten percent each year, by five percent each year, like what is that goal that we're trying to reach? And then once you dig down, like then you start talking about the strategies, like who's gonna do that, what is the plan, like those are the work plans. That kind of get into like the, the, the staff's work, but how do we know? That we're achieving that? Increase available housing units when we don't know what our goal is, right? So then how do we come back and say, yes, we achieved, you know, that ten percent goal, or we've only achieved five percent? Of housing units, like how do we measure that success, and then how do we know when we're successful, so that's one. You know, very clear example. And, you know, the other one, I mean, there's, I have a whole list of them, I'm not gonna go into it today, I mean, every. I have comments on every single line, but I think this is just an opportunity for us to collect that baseline, like. Um. You know, I mean. I can, you know, improve the city's website, well, what's wrong with the website, like what's, you know, what is, how, what does improve mean? Like, how do we define that? Um, and how do we measure that success? Um. You know, improve recruitment for city committees, like. What is our city committee status now, like what's the rate of? You know, um, participation, and how do we measure recruitment for that? Like, do we want a hundred percent for each committee, like, you know what I'm? Am I making?
Right, yeah, I think those are all valid points, I, I've got a, I've got a thought, you know, we, we could easily find out. How many vacancies we have on our city committees, and we could. Look at, well, are we doing the right things to get people in those vacancies, and if not, what, what should we be doing? Um, with regard to the housing, it's a. Since it's something we've taken, spent a lot of time. Talking about, and we will continue to do that, you know, we've got, uh. We've got this project that we're doing on. Country Club Road. And at the end of it, we're gonna have, we're, our hope is to have. In the neighborhood of three to four hundred additional housing units up there. And. We don't know exactly how many years that's gonna take, but. We can't say, well. How many housing units did we put there in two thousand twenty-four, and is that getting us to the goal? Because that's not what's gonna get us to the goals. What we know our plan is to do the, uh. Do the growth centered, uh, renewal and designation, and, and these other steps that. We know are part of getting us to that goal, and. We can. Track whether we're doing those things in the way that we said we were gonna do them. Palin, I see you've got your hand up.
Uh, thank you, so, uh, one of the things.
Could you try to be a little bit louder?
Okay. Or everybody's sleeping, trying to be, okay, so, how about now, better?
Yes, that is better.
Okay, thank you, uh, so. I am okay to, uh, approve all the goals, uh, but, um, I don't feel. Comfortable this point, approve the initiatives and action items, because I mentioned this before, um. I wanna see the budget, like projected budget for each, um, initiative. Because goals are kind of our vision, right, we wanna see those things happen to our city. Uh, but initiatives and actions show that if they are real or not. If they are measurable or not, so maybe some of the things, we don't have any budget to succeed. That's why it is important for me to see some, um. Projected budget, uh, for each, um. Let me say goal, like a generally, but basically initiatives and actions. And I know we will be still working on this plan, so I'm very happy that it's like twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven strategic plan. So it's a three-year plan, um, but I just wanna, um, mention this again, thank you.
Well, you say we're gonna continue to work on this plan, the hope was that we would adopt the whole thing tonight. My Carrie.
Uh, I, I also would love to adopt the whole thing tonight, um. We can, we'll have lots of opportunities to make adjustments if we need to, um, I don't. I think that the, I think it's already errors on the side of too much detail, um, I would. Prefer a strategic plan that was sort of broader in scope, and then left it up to the staff to. Decide how to implement everything, so, um. I feel like they've given us a ton of detail, I feel very well informed, I feel comfortable approving this the way that it is. And so I'm moved that we accept the strategic plan. At, with the changes that Lauren and Tim suggested.
Is there a second?
Second?
Seconded by Lauren, okay, Palin, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, um, I just wanna make it clear that I said we will work on this plan because Kelly mentioned that.
Again, you could, if you could move that closer, you.
Okay, so.
Thanks.
I said, I just wanna make it clear, I said we will work on this plan. Because Kelly ma- mentioned that every year. We will see, so I'm not saying that. Oh, let's not approve it tonight and work all the details. Uh, but some of the details are important if we wanna approve. The strategic plan as a whole, that's why my hope is, I say yes. I'm approving the plan, I wanna see the items I, um. Suggested, uh, on the yearly, um, what do we call it, like a yearly working plan.
Oh, thank you, that clarification's very helpful, thanks, Palin. Uh, Tim and then Lauren.
She had a further clarification for changes I wanted to propose.
Great.
Basically.
I don't, I don't think anybody should feel sheepish about that.
Well, we've been kind of listening and waiting for, and I assume we'd be discussing tonight. It's like, going right to voting, which is fun, but, um.
Yeah, we do have a motion on it, on the table.
Yes, he's commenting on the motion, I just want to make sure you have doing it all correctly, so we can discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so create more housing, the first thing we've got is a developed policy to reflect housing priorities. Guys, we've got zoning policy that directs our housing, we've got a city plan. It's a time at which we've got to look more for results here, less for process, and that's, that's not a good action step to have the guide, or. We, we don't need to develop more policy for housing.
So, in all fairness, um, you know, that was there before you just recently, that, that was, had been drafted before you finished the zoning process.
Okay.
Technically, we could. So technically, we could also check that as.
That'd be great to take it right out. Yeah.
Or just done for this year. You know, when we started this back last fall, and you've since done the zoning.
Yep. So have you completed the FEMA damage inventory list? It seems like we must be there, but. So that's.
However, the projects on that list are not complete.
No, but it says, create the list.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
We could take out those that are already done as a.
Yeah. Um, on page six, under initiative 1.2.8, develop and implement snow melt systems. It's been on a few, but we really haven't talked about it. If we really want to be a green community with net zero goals, I'm struggling with this one.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's trying to get us there.
Well, and one way of looking at it, but using district heat to melt snow is not a cheap way to do it or environmentally that green. Uh, well, it is, again, it's just a conversation. We haven't had, heard in presentations, and I'm not comfortable with it at this point. So I don't know how you guys feel.
As opposed to.
Yeah, Tim, before you move it on, uh, Bill had a question for you.
Well, I.
Go ahead. Bill has had a response and maybe.
Yeah, I think, so again, this kind of goes to, I mean, we wouldn't do a snowmelt system without the council's approval, right? So there's going to be a discussion about it. I think the question is, is this something we can actively, you know, have on a future agenda for development? I mean, so it could be considered development of a snow melt system uh, rather than do it, you know, develop, this does is a little bit more of a definitive statement.
I don't want people to look at this and say, yeah, you guys said let's do.
Right. You know, because I, right, the other, the other environmental benefits are the treatment of the runoff thing, you know, it gets clean before it goes in the river. So there's that too. And less driving. But yeah, I hear your point. So.
So Tim, would you live with, uh, evaluate and consider a snowmelt program? Okay.
Um, the other one that's kind of in that category for me, almost there goes, is the, um, on page seven, under projects. We've still got projects underway. We still list Confluence Park. And it just seems like so much has changed since the flood with issues we're having with, you know, just police responses and emergency issues down on the bike path. It, it's just not a realistic project and keeping it in as if it is, feels like a disservice. Certainly, people are out raising money, trying to do things for it. And is this really a project we would even consider moving forward with at this point?
I kind of, I kind of agree, although the last time we voted on this, we voted to extend, extend it for 18 months. I don't even know when that's up.
It's, it's up this, I have it written down. It's like Ju- July or August. This, oh, really?
This is some. Next month or the.
Yeah, very soon.
It's coming up, yeah. So as it is now, the ad- policy adopted by the council is to give the, uh, proponents of the, uh, plan time to raise the money to complete the work without any additional city funding. And so again, this might be one of those things where it shouldn't be developed Confluence, Confluence Park. It, it maybe should be, uh, make a decision about Confluence Park. Now, I don't think we should be making that decision today by just changing the strategic plan.
Making decisions are better than having it on an active process, project list.
Work for people?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna say, you know, just for explanation, that it's, it's on the list because you know, as it stands today, it is an active project that the council's approved and had a plan for and gave a deadline for funding. I mean, we've sent support letters for it because it was council policy. So I mean, it's just, just, you know, I don't know where they are with their funding, but I think they're pretty close. So.
But so much has changed. I think we can't ignore that.
Right. But I'm just saying, this isn't us trying to force a project. This is on here because it was an unadopted project that, just like all the rest of these. And actually, Grunt World Bridge is almost done.
And the council can change that, but, but this is where we are. So Tim, I think you were in the middle of a list of other items that you were gonna bring up.
Yeah, um, yeah, some of them are just duplicates, like pursue snowmelt option again is under pursue environmental improvement projects. Um, and then the other one was just, the last one for me was, um, was a couple. Uh, evaluate swift water rescue. Again, it's been on the list a few times, but I don't think we've ever talked about it.
So that has to do with, that is, has to do with more of a capacity issue with our emergency services for people that are in the river that needs with water rescuing and flooding. We've had a couple of cases where we've had to pull people out and it was dangerous for our responders. And not, is not the reason we hired, um, but, uh, actually, our new fire chief is, that's one of his levels of expertise. So we hopefully can have him look at, evaluate that for us. So.
Yeah.
So that was more of an internal thing, but it's definitely a need that, and, and, you know, could need resources at some point.
My last nittly things are, um, using abbreviations and not saying the words. So like initiative 5.2.3, also on page 11 or 12, it says ICS training for staff. What is ICS training?
Incident command system.
So it should be spelled out.
Yeah.
And also down under, um, 551, a little lower on that page, under address mental health and addiction issues, it says continue CIT training.
Yeah.
Those were my notes.
Anybody else? All right.
So, I mean, I feel like the kind of high level priorities we're focusing on, like, I'm not hearing concerns about those. Like, part of what I like about being able to do a multi-year plan, to me, that means we could continue to work on refining. Are there specific targets? Like, I love setting some, like, 400 housing units in four years or something like, but I think we could adopt this tonight. We can, you know, it's, it feels like it's all on the right track and we could build on it to add better clarity. And maybe that's what, like, next year's strategic plan is because we have this as adopted, maybe some work could be done. We've got some strategic planning experts who could help, like, and we could, you know, build them out as more smart goals, but we don't have to start from scratch with a blank slate, um, like we've done in the past, which then just takes so time, so much time, it's hard to then get to, um, in the kind of format that we have and so much limited time with so many other competing agenda items constantly. So to me, I'm comfortable with this. Um, and I think it's something that we could build on and improve upon and like to Kailin's point, build in budget for the next iteration and stuff. I think those are all great ideas. And so hopefully, if we have this to start from, we could, we can adopt it and we could just kind of improve upon it as we go to like have more crisp goals, outcomes, deliverables and all that good stuff. So anyway, I'll, I'll be voting in support tonight and look forward to ongoing.
I think, I'm seeing some nodding heads. Are we? Is this ready to go to a vote? Keeping in mind that Lauren's motion was to approve it with the, with the changes that, uh, we've made and I interpret that motion to include the changes that were suggested and accepted subsequent to the basic, making of the motion.
House motion, but. Carrie's motion.
Carrie, okay, Carrie's motion.
Carrie, are you good?
Okay, Carrie.
Uh, I think so. Um, I'm, I, I, Tim had additional suggestions, but I am, I, I would just love to hear them run off really quickly again. He made suggestions since I made the motion.
Okay, um, do you, do you have, could you go up, do them very quickly?
Modifications. Okay, so the first one was, um, on the goals, which we talked about, was just they're removing, um, the unhoused after.
Yeah.
For all. And then under, um, create more housing, item A, we effectively have already done through the zoning change, so remove that, which is develop policy to reflect housing priorities.
Carrie, are you hearing, uh?
Yeah.
Are you loud enough? Okay, good. I just noticed you're far back from the mic, so.
I'll get closer.
Thanks, Tim. Um, you had to change.
From develop and implement snowmelt systems on page six of 12, item 1.2.8. I think instead of develop and implement snowmelt systems, it was.
Evaluating, consider.
Evaluating, consider.
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, consider and decide what to do with Confluence, Confluence Park, something like that.
Yes. Okay, really?
Some, some jargon issues, initialisms and acronyms.
Right, yeah. Basically wherever you see them throughout, just.
Okay, sounds great to me.
Okay, are we ready to vote? If so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you, folks. We've adopted our strategic plan. All right. Um, 10, 20, 10, 21? Okay, um, do we have time to take up the revised communication plan? Come on up.
Evelyn Prim, Communications Coordinator. Um, yeah, this should be really quick because I do not have a fancy, uh, presentation. I just basically wanted to.
I thought that was your job. That's what you do.
The one time that I don't. Uh, but no, I basically just wanted to introduce you all to this document and just give you some time to read through it, absorb it, and, um, I'm here to answer questions if you have tonight. But um, mainly, uh, like I briefly said, um, the last time we were here, it's mainly a staff document. Um, but it's in the format that, again, anybody could look at it. It's my, my goal anyway, is that anybody could look at it, look at that and then have a general understanding of what my position, um, is about and the things that I do on the day to day. But again, also thinking about the long-term vision of why am I even here in the first place? And that really, um, was, was birthed, um, from, from you all, from the, the 2022, 23 strategic plan, um, the responsible and engaged government, um, goal. So that was really pivotal in how I put this together. And then through uh, consultation with our crisis communication response team and the city manager's office, that we've honed this to a, a, a presentable document. It is far from complete. I will say there are, every, not a day goes by where I don't encounter something that is like, that should be in this, in the plan. I gotta put that in the plan. Um, so it will continue to evolve. I'll continue to add to it, but I'll also keep, um, the most published or the most current uh, version up on the communications page on the, on the website as well for, for anybody to review. So.
Thank you. I think it's great to have this. I, uh, I noticed a bunch of things, uh, like some things I would add to the, on page 17, um, the things I would add to the predictable month and week and day, uh, observations. So I'll, I'll just get with you about those.
Please do. Yeah, and that's, that's also, I, I think, a great opportunity too, is um, anything that you see, that you all see that you'd like to be included, like, please let me know. I want this to be a document that works for all of us, not, not just me, but especially as, as the vehicle to, um, uh, achieve the goals that we, that we want. So, yeah, all ears.
And one of the reasons, one of the things that prompted us, well, other than the fact it's a good thing to do in general, but knowing that we did make some fundamental changes coming up, you know, basically the bridge page and to a lesser extent, the Times Argus page have been really kind of bedrocks of our communications. Um, it was sort of, what are we, you know, got thinking, what are we gonna do to replace that or how will we supplement? What, what is a newer plan? And so we felt like you should be informed of, kind of, how, what, what our thoughts are.
Anybody else have anything to say before we let everyone go sit down? All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, item 16, public record inspection, copying and transmission policy.
And so this had been, uh, on an earlier agenda. The council approved that on the consent agenda. And at the last meeting, council member Heaney asked that it be placed on an upcoming agenda for discussion. Turn it over to you.
I think it was mostly about, um, because we did it on the consent agenda and we changed rates and fees. Um, and I think it's important for people to know what's involved in terms of getting public information. Um, and just thought we should at least acknowledge it and discuss the fees publicly versus like, cause I wish, and I hadn't left it on the consent agenda and taken it off at that time. So really just throwing it out, kind of any sense of just, um, it's really pretty far reaching because it deals with a lot of different kinds of information. General increases really just reflects staff time and effort to generate information.
Yeah, I mean, we get a lot of public records requests and I think one of the reasons the police chief states is that they get really the bulk of them. Um, and most of them are quickly handled within half an hour or so, and there's no fee. Um, but there are some that are very extensive and require additional time, uh, depending on what's involved. And, uh, we've had some cases, uh, not referring to Stephen, because I know he asked for a lot, but we have had some folks, uh, I think generally, maybe even out of state, that have been bringing in very, a lot of requests and have figured out that if they send them a single requests, then, you know, they'd send in 20 or 30 individual requests at one time, all asking for the same type of information, but each, each individual request would be under 30 minutes, but together they'd be a three to four hour piece of work. And so we were trying to address that. Chief, do you want to talk about that? So it was really just trying to revise those fees and, and also to, uh, reflect the actual cost because.
Yeah, sure. Eric Nordensen from the Police Department. Um, yeah, one of the things we did was review what the rates were in the communities around us. You know, I think anytime we're in a budget shortfall, as we start to look at opportunities, listening to you folks, hey, find the opportunities. Uh, so what I did is I looked at the state police, which is right around us. I looked at Berry City, and I also looked at a small town, Brandon. Um, they have a progressive police chief that I used to work with.
Right.
And all the rates were the same. And I said, well, we're missing the boat on this. So, uh, I started to make some phone calls to get the whys and, um, we decided to match the rates of those, those areas of what they charge. The amount of staff time is significant for those. Uh, I, I think I'm at 95 public records requests this year, which, uh, I do 110 to 125 a year. Um, so yeah, it's a significant amount of time. My admin, I share, which you know, I share with the fire department. Um, and that her primary responsibility is ambulance billing. So it's on Kevin and I. So, um, there's a lot of time that's involved. So, uh, yeah.
I'm curious, the, we have uh, photos and videos, audio recordings. Those are all gonna be expensive. I can understand why those are gonna be expensive. $20 for a police report, uh, that's, that seems like that would just be finding a piece of paper and making a copy of it. Is there more to it than that?
At times, there could be redactions. There's, could be digging. I could have to go downstairs to the hard files. You just never know what it is and what it entails. And then, you know, you might have a case with 16 different attachments, and then you gotta download 16 attachments and print them and scan them and uh, get them to the, the person in the way that they like them. Uh, you know, sure, there's some easy ones. You know, one area that, that I think we really focused on though is like victims of crime. So if you are a victim of crime, I'm not making you do any fees. You're gonna get your records that you need, you know, like, these are for records, you know. You know, we have neighborhood feuds where they want to know the records for the last two years of their neighbor because they're not getting along and it takes me three and a half hours. And, you know, it's okay, you know, and I, I can't ask why. You know, I just provide the records. Um, but at the end of the day, it's three and a half hours of stuff. You'd probably rather have me do something more productive than just that. So, um, and then, you know, we got, you know, we're on YouTube now. Somebody's going, the, the beauty of everything that I'm posting on our, on our pages and social media, they go right through our arrest logs from you know, January of 2023, and they request every single record from every arrest, one at a time. And that's within the 30 minutes. And next thing I know, on a Sunday night, I get 25 public records requests. So I said, I know what I'm doing on Monday. You know, and so then Monday becomes Tuesday when I can actually do my job. So, uh, it, it's, it's a lot. So once we instituted this policy, that slowed down those ones. Um, I don't think it's had any. once we instituted this policy, that slowed down those ones. Um, I don't think it's had any impact on other other records for people that need them, so.
Palin.
Okay, thank you. So uh, will there be any procedures for people who cannot afford uh, this fees if they can prove that they don't have any money to pay the city?
We we can look at case by case, but you know, typically that would be the ones, the the victims of the crime, and we're not charging for crime victims for the case that involves that case. So if your car got got broken into or or whatever, I'll give you that case, you know, you deserve that case. Um, so it it, we keep it pretty simple. Um, it's, it gets a little challenging when you want the records for the last two years or three years or five years of something that like is just totally random. I can't ask you why. And I'd love to provide it for you, but it shouldn't take me four hours to get those records. You know.
Okay.
You guys pay me a lot of money. I mean, if you want me to do that, I I can or, you know, between that and the unfunded, you know, expungements that we have, our administrative lift is incredible right now between my detective doing expungements with with uh, my uh, my uh, dispatch supervisor, you know, discovery requests or a different dispatcher and somebody else, you know, just it's literally pulling records, it seems like all day, every day.
And to expand um, Palin's question just a little bit, is there a general fee waiver provision in the policy? Well, so that's the thing.
I didn't see any fee waivers in any of the policies that I looked at.
Okay.
You know, but we've made the decision internally that if you're the victim of a crime, that's that's no problem, so.
Yeah. So if we were to look at it again, that's one thing we might want to consider, you know, we i- if there's going to be a waiver policy, you know, what what the criteria should be. Okay, uh, thanks, chief. Uh, you might, when you stay up for just a minute, Steve, I think you have a comment or question?
I do, Steve Whitaker. Um, I question, I know it's from, it was in there the prior version, when this was adopted, a number of people in the community watched the way the council adopted this. Uh, it called it the Whitaker uh, policy because it was meant to throw a impediment against records requests. Uh, two dollars a minute. I don't know how many people in city government make a hundred twenty dollars an hour. Um, but uh, that should be a a red flag. Uh, the fact that the city manager doesn't even know whether there's a waiver provision in there uh, should be a red flag of how uncooked this thing is. Um, it was represented on May twenty-second, when this was on the consent agenda, that this is consistent with state police records. Uh, the state police uh, have not charged for several voluminous records requests regarding a uh, a homicide, two, two homicides, the Mark Johnson killing by Montpelier Police out on the Spring Street Bridge. It took them a year to get them all processed, redacted, et cetera. But I was never sent a bill for that. Um, so but, and I also put in a request recently where my vehicle was vandalized and I was told, pay up the fees first, you know? I I wanted the video and the recordings of the dispatch because the detective again came and lied about whether I said a witness was present. And so a lot of this, we don't have a police accountability board. We don't have a police review commission. And the scope of the police review commission that happened a couple of years ago was intentionally narrowed to not look back, but only look forward. Uh, Lauren and I think yourself could attest to that. So the when accountability is the purpose, when people are harassed just for sitting in their car in the Haney Lot, you know, and I ask for videos, now it's going to be twenty forty. And when the press asks for videos or audio, it's going to be twenty, forty, sixty, eighty dollars. And that creates a real impediment to accessing records that are necessary to figure out what really happened, you know, the I'm better at at processing and understanding what these records mean. I asked for CAD files re- related to a recently deceased person who is also one of four victims that's been assaulted by the same person here in town. And it's like, oh, that's going to be twenty dollars per incident for, what was it, twenty different reports, chief, you told me? So that's four hundred dollars. It's going to cost me to basically piece together how this violent you know, menace in our in our community uh, is is being handled from a person who recently died while this had not yet been adjudicated. So I don't think that this is anywhere near baked. I don't think the press or the public has had opportunity to understand implications, uh, both on their own requests for records. This is the first I've heard about the waiver for crime victims, but I often assist others in asking for records because I know how to do it and they don't. But I'm not the victim, so I'm not going to get the waiver. So this is, this is complicated. I I asked that it be revoted uh, or reconsidered uh, because this thing needs a lot more work and it needs to be probably handled similar in a manner you would in ordinance by holding, by publishing it, it put understanding, have some analysis of the implications. The press would be very willing to do this because they are impacted by this. Their reporting is impacted by this, is fully dependent on this, and this is putting a paywall between accountability and transparency.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Um, what I would say is that when I've been present uh, for the development of this policy and when it was being discussed, what I'm mainly hearing is that there are these commercial entities that are contacting the Montpelier Police Department and probably police departments all around the country saying give me, give us your videos, we can put it on YouTube essentially. And and that's what's causing a, driving a lot of uh, a lot of the burdens that we're seeing here. And so there's a cost to that. Um, does anybody else have any questions? Any other members of the council?
I'll just say I can't speak for every request because I don't see them. I mean, I see all the requests, but I don't see all the, how they're all handled, but I know that we typically at least certainly the manager's office airs on the side of not charging people. It's only if something's excessive. I don't believe we ever asked you for anything money. Um, and uh, you know, the, I get it. We certainly want information to be available to people. That's why first half hour is free for people. And I think we we push that um, the stat- the statute allows for charging to to understand. So it can't be, you know, sort of take over someone's there's a reason, right? There is time involved. There are, uh, and and frankly, the most cases, the digital format does make it faster. You know, I think initially when this came in, it was literally photocopying and making, you know, printed documents. Now it is certainly a lot easier to email a document to somebody, but it still means finding it. Somebody's looking, it still means doing a search. And in extensive searches, that means for us, it's uh, we, you know, we have to go, we go to our vendor and have them do keyword searches. And sometimes it's hit or miss, so then we have to do another one if we don't get the right ones. And that's, that charges. I mean, we don't charge their costs. We just charge as per this, so. Um, I mean, it is, it's a fine line. I get it, you know, certainly. We'd love to just be able to give it all away free, but then uh, that's all we'd be doing.
Okay, so we have this on for discussion. Um, I don't think we're taking any action on this tonight. Um, some member of the council tonight or in the future can say let's put it on the agenda to consider amending the policy. I don't know if that's if anyone wants to do that now, but it's certainly open to do, Tim.
Actually, I was gonna say, I I'm glad we discussed it. Um, listening to the chief and and thinking it through, looking at some of these things. Um, and I know what it takes to look up videos and search it out and find the right piece. Um, it takes time. And I think that's one of the things I was most surprised at when I started on council was how many requests and how much staff time goes, you kept hearing about, going into these pieces, so um, you know, that's not the primary work of our local government. It's a piece we do, but it it's just amazing how much time it takes for our staff and um, my initial reaction is having heard what I've heard tonight, I'm satisfied with this, so.
Okay, thanks. I think we can move on. Um.
Thank you.
To, thanks, chief. Move on to, um, I don't think we have anything for other business, which gets us to council reports. Down to Adrian tonight.
Uh, I will just reiterate, I sent an email around that um, we have an exciting opportunity in Montpelier that the U S Virgin Islands soccer team is coming to Montpelier. Um, and they are going to be staying in Montpelier and they'll be playing at the College Green on July eleventh at six P M. Organized by Emmanuel Williams, who is our local P E teacher. And so I think this is a great opportunity for um, hopefully replicating additional recreation opportunities in our town to draw outside um, tourists. And so I hope that you all um, are able to attend that event and um, maybe we talked about something special to welcome the soccer team. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with everyone and encourage you to participate.
Thanks, Carrie.
Uh, no report tonight.
So? Um, the point in time report uh, just came out and I I've got a copy of it or a link I can send to people. Um, it's a report that's done once a year on the homeless uh, population. And there are specific, there are a lot of specific numbers that I think will be eye-opening to members of the council. Um, it's a problem that's not going away. It's just getting bigger. And um, we can't solve it ourselves, but I think we need to to press uh, the people who can solve it for for help. Um, anyway, I'll I'll send it out to folks and and we can decide, you know, where we go from there. Thanks, Tim.
Just for people to think about for the future, I can talk to, I I think as we get to twenty-something agenda items and we keep doing this, and every time we get through an agenda and it's like, so I remember I said, I made the comment about, you know, waste another perfectly good four hours and I don't know what I just accomplished kind of thing. It was like the old car talk line. But um, but it it does feel like we've got so much on our agendas and it it's hard to feel like when we're done, we've accomplished a lot. I think it's it's just you know, it's a mile wide and inch deep kind of thing. And and maybe we need to look at a format where we have to distill out items that maybe we just can't talk about everything um, and get down to key items that we need to be discussing and 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 make some real progress on our key goals and issues. So um, kind of looking at kind of the way we jumped through tonight, it it's like, wow. So I'm sorry, I just to think about maybe how we can format our future to be more productive and 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 have agendas that we can really do justice to. Um, and then the then the other thing on the happy note is July third is really soon. And are we in the parade?
Yes.
Okay.
We're in the parade. All right. I don't know where we are exactly, but yeah. Um, Palin.
No report for tonight.
Lauren?
Pass tonight, thanks.
Okay. Mayor's report, I just have a couple of items.
Yeah.
One is that uh, last week I had an opportunity with uh, some of our council members and our uh, other legislative delegations to meet with the representatives of Vermont, the Vermont Afghan Alliance to talk about um, the uh, experience of Afghan refugees who've moved to Montpelier. And I think it's really a great credit to uh, to the volunteers who have spent so much time uh, working with uh, people who who needed the support to come here and um, members of the community who laid out a lot of money to help provide for housing and uh, and I think it's a great thing. As as I said, said the other night, um, we're talking about the Afghan refugees as new Americans and the United States is probably the only country in in the world where you can say that someone moves to the country, decides to make this their home. And they're Americans. You know, you can move to France, live in France for fifty years, you will never be French. You can move to Japan, live the rest of your life in Japan, you will never be Japanese, but you can move here and be an American. So a- and the number of Afghan members of our community is uh, is striking. How many people are here? We heard there are forty to fifty Afghan students in our public schools, uh, five percent of the uh, of the kindergarten class next year is going to be Afghan students, so their families are here. They're making their homes here. Also, July third is coming up. It's a great event. We're going to be in the parade and I encourage everybody to get out. Get to the 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 food stands and uh, listen to the bands and watch the fireworks. Um, look to see everybody out there. And that's what I've got. City clerks report.
Early voting has begun for the August thirteenth primary. So everything you need should be on the clerk's page of the website. Looks at um, sample ballots, registering to vote links, requesting an early ballot link. The warning should all be there. So yeah, check it out.
That's it for you. Um, so with regard to the primary, are you looking for volunteers or we all covered already?
Oh, yeah. No, I'll need volunteers. I'm getting out a link um, to start the you know, looking around in the community, but members of the V C A, yeah, to the extent you can help. That's, that would be tremendous.
Great. City managers report.
Okay, I know it's late, but I do have a few things, so hang tight. Uh, first thing with regard to the unhoused population, we are working at putting together uh, an agenda item at the next meeting, July seventeen, to sort of have our different departments report on their experiences and the extent of what we're seeing. Maybe get some external folks in here that are issuing to to try to just update you on what we're seeing and in those kind of efforts. So that is in the works. I hope we can pull that off. Um, so that's coming up. Um, do have a couple of meetings with state folks that uh, just to refer, I am meeting with uh, folks about emergency shelter uh, this week. Uh, specifically about in potentially investing more funds into our Elks Club to put in things that have been mentioned, showers, more space. Make it, you know, last year was an emergency basis to make it a better facility. Uh, I think there's some state money for that, so we have, we have a meeting coming up with that. Also, a different meeting. Uh, this will be after the holiday week, but um, kindly, the state has put together a group of people, uh, of key officials from different agencies that all could potentially be involved in funding or doing things with with regard to our um, Country Club Road Project. So we've got a a meeting with a whole group of people, Mike and Josh and I would meet. Uh, so that's coming up. Uh, so that should be interesting. Uh, and similarly, uh, the mayor and I have uh, starting our tour, our meetings with uh, key employers. We've already met with Vermont Mutual. We've got National Life and Union Mutual coming up. I think I've got a meeting with the hospital, so we're talking to them in general about building relations, but also suggesting that they there may be a housing project they might want to get involved in if they're, if that's an issue. So um, that's good. So speaking of housing.
Up in and say that, oh, Vermont Mutual, they're coming up on their two-hundredth anniversary. Founded in this city, been here for that, uh, for the whole time and they it's clear that they're committed to being here.
Yeah, they've had, you know, a couple of bad floods and they're but they're they're rebuilding. So so speaking of the housing project, however, uh, we're still, we're still looking at this a little bit, but I do want to, or we have some pretty serious concerns with the Act two fifty bill that passed, um, as we as we unpack it. Uh, on the plus side, it made housing in growth centers, um, you know, basically exempt from Act two fifty. The downside is that it's not until uh, January one, twenty twenty-six. And I think more importantly, it And I think more importantly, it kind of freezes the growth centers the way they are now. So our goal of expanding our growth center to include this may be shut out, which means we then have to go through an entirely different process to get TIF, which you can't do until you become designated as a tier one area, which you can't do until twenty twenty six. So the basically the goal to jumpstart housing, just put it all off for two years. So well done there. So it's, we're trying to learn more, but it it and it's going to come up at my meeting with the state officials about the funding, like what else are you going to do here, folks? Because you didn't, you didn't help. So big problems there. As far as and and as I said, we're still digging on this. So maybe we'll, someone will convince us that we're wrong. I hope we are. The last thing I wanted to bring up is and this is the item I mentioned earlier that we might ask to be on one of the special meetings. And it's it's a, it's a, it's a tricky issue. So you may recall a couple of years ago, we adopted, the city council adopted a responsible contractor ordinance, which some of you may not even realize that we have this. But it requires any of our contracts that are above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay to certify that they're paying all their employees on their job at the Vermont prevailing wage rate, not Davis Bacon wage rates, not what's considered livable, but the Vermont prevailing wage. And because of flood, because of COVID, we haven't had a lot of big projects. But now we have some money and we're starting to move forward with these things. And so just on School Street, our costs, the the upcharge, we asked specifically how much of, first of all, the bids came in over budget, the the bid, the only bid. And then we asked how much of that was due to this provision and it was a thirty percent. So while I certainly think it's great policy to want to treat workers fairly, I think it's also you know, that and and we're concerned about this with the paving bids. So, you know, if it's thirty percent more going to the contractors for this work, then that's thirty percent less work that we can get done with that same money. So that's our concern. You know, I heard conversation during the break that not all of School Street was going to be done. That is, that's an incorrect statement. All of it is in the bid. The prices are over and we are trying to renegotiate those or get them down and or seek other ways to put funding together. It's a priority to do all of it. And that the culvert will be done separately from the main bid. So that is all still, but that is the one that basically so we would, the question is, would you consider obviously you have to make that decision tonight. Would you consider having an item to discuss whether we would basically put a temporary hold on this ordinance, kind of like we did with the the Parkland ordinance a few years back, basically because all our flood recovery work is going to get hit with this. And so would we, you know, basically at least through this construction season with the idea that we'd revisit the full policy in the fall. And the reason it's of some urgency is that we're trying to get these contracts signed in these bids for this summer's work. So if we could do that on either the July one or July nine meetings. And I know that's more than a five minute meeting, but even if we get to July seventeen, you know, time's ticking. Projects are getting done. I hate to spring this on you, it really just came to my attention this afternoon. It's too late to add to this agenda. Would, you know, I think there should be some public warning of this. We shouldn't just adopt this that, you know, this time of night. So right, yeah. Yeah, it's an ordinance also.
Carrie.
So I I just want to clarify is is that the the issue is the that it would be too expensive to stick with this? Or that we can't actually?
The issue is that it's expensive. And 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 we are in a bidding climate where there's already a whole bunch of work out there for people. Because there's a lot of money, you know, we're not the only people that have federal money for projects. And certainly even in our area, there's a lot of compet-, you know, for smaller work, just for, you know, flood repairs, those kind of things is a lot of, a lot of competition for work. So the feedback we're getting is if something makes it more of a hassle to to do the job, there's just other work. So why deal with it? But specifically the indication and we, you know, I would want to do a total scrub before a real meeting to make sure of this, but that we were told by the contractor that it was an additional thirty percent of the bid to meet these wages. And these are, you know, I think even if we were to go to the Davis Bacon wages, it still would be more than general bidding, but at least that's something contractors, many of them are used to using. We we actually set a a different rate. The this Vermont prevailing wage rate. So we can do it. It will cost us more. It will mean that the people working on the job you know, get paid better. So it's it's a really a policy question and and, you know, the council did wrestle with this a few years ago and did opt to adopt this. It's not a policy, it's an ordinance. So it's not like you can just change it. It's actually would require at least one public hearing. Our the law and our tar really only requires one public hearing, usually due to by tradition, but we could amend it with one, at least for this provision. So I'm throwing it out there. And I think the real question is, again, not ask you to decide what you will or will do, but would you consider taking it up at one of these special?
So I think I saw your hand up.
Well, I was just curious how we how we verify compliance or have we never had to do it?
We haven't really had to do it to this extent. So we get basically, it gets a written certification from the contractor. You know, if it's Davis Bacon, there's a whole payroll audit system and
We don't, yeah, we don't do that.
Don't do that with this for this.
There's a reason Davis Bacon does that.
Exactly. No, I know. I get it. Lauren.
Yeah, I I mean, I I know you said you'd scrub the numbers like it just, it seems shocking to me that they're really paying thirty percent less in this labor market than the prevailing wage in Vermont. So like, I just find that hard to believe. So maybe this is a negotiating piece, like go back and be like, did you inflate it by thirty percent because of this like policy, but you're not, there's no way they're paying thirty percent under. I I just, it seems hard to believe, like maybe, maybe that's true, but it just I would want more information before I would want to move away from a policy we adopted to give people a livable wage.
Carrie.
Yeah, I agree with that. I I can't believe that they're paying thirty percent below. So yeah, I think that it is worth continuing that conversation. I also think that I mean, we didn't we didn't adopt this ordinance because we were trying to save money. We adopted it because we were trying to make sure people get paid fairly and decently, and that's going to cost more money. And so that's what we took on when we pass this ordinance. I think it's a good one. I I would like to stand by it.
So are people open to putting it on an agenda for one of these upcoming meetings or do we want to just say the ordinance is what it is? Or how about we put it on for an agenda and we'll we'll get more information and then we'll decide if we even want to put it on a on an agenda for some kind of reconsideration. Is that clear enough? I'm seeing, I'm seeing people nod.
So I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. So you want you want to have a discussion about whether to then put it on for re- for a potential suspension for the season?
Yeah.
We wouldn't want us to just put it on for that and then decide you don't want to do it. Just
Well, that's what I'm I'm trying to feel out with people. Want to say I'm I'm thinking it's going to take some lead up to it because the majority of the council weren't even on the council when we adopted it. It's going to take some filling it, fill filling people in on what it's all about. And there's some factual issues that I'm hearing some skepticism about.
There's also some urgency, right?
I mean, you're good. That's the that's the flip side of it is that, you know, if we if we do the process for too long, it won't matter for the season's contracts.
Let's see if we can put it on for the first for a preliminary discussion. And then
Maybe the the night or whatever.
Yeah. If people are open to considering it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, folks. Eleven P M. on the dot and we are adjourned.